Okay, good evening, welcome everyone. Seeing quorum, the Chair opens up the Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. It's 6:30 PM, we're meeting here at Mashpee Town Hall, in the Wacoit Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. We're being broadcast live and recorded, we're being streamed on, live on the town of Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov/channeleight. And we're being broadcast live on local channels 8 and 1072. So I would like to invite everybody to rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
(Inaudible)
So we have a public hearing, we have a public hearing at 6:40 and at 6:50. Until that time, we will do some other matters that are before the Board. First matter is the review of minutes from October 15th, 2025. So I looked at it, I reviewed all the motions carefully, I didn't have any edits.
So be.
So you're to accept as presented?
As presented, yes.
And there's a couple of, there was a couple of notes from Brian, so with those notes incorporated?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Upstate.
Thank you. Is it enough time to do the A and R?
Yep. Should.
Well, we could take that out of order, although I'm not sure, Chris Crane is representing both Shellback and the A and R folks, so it may not be, I was hoping perhaps we could do the engineer thing.
Okay, let's do the engineers report.
Yeah.
Sorry, Chris.
Or not, not the engineer report, but rather the, um...
Yes.
The consulting engineer.
Okay.
So...
So I think, is it on the agenda?
I don't believe it is, because it was an issue that...
So under the, so we'll take it under Town Planner's Report, New Consultant Engineer Onboarding.
Okay, great.
So go right ahead.
Yeah, so just real quick, I believe I've had individual conversations with a couple of Board members on this issue, certainly Madam Chair. We've reached a bit of a, we've reached a bit of a stalemate in the selection of our consulting engineer. If you recall, our first choice, or the Board's first choice was Ty and Bond after the interviews, and a second choice, the Board indicated was Beals and Thomas. The primary point of contention that we could not come to agreement on is whether or not to allow limits of liability in the contract. Historically, both with Ed Pesci and Mr. Rowley, we've never had limits of liability for our peer review. Town Council's office also said that they couldn't recommend it. Ty and Bond seemed to indicate they couldn't budge on it, although they did come up with the numbers, you know, they increased the number that they were okay with two or three times during the points of the discussion. I did take it upon myself to call Beals and Thomas and have a conversation with them to see if they would require limits of liability, were we to circle back, or the Board to support the idea of circling back and negotiating with them. They indicated that they would not require limits of liability, so I just wanted to have this Board's approval to engage in negotiations with Beals and Thomas as an alternate. You know, if Ty and Bond comes back and says, hey, just kidding, you know, we, we don't need limits of liability written into the contract, then that's something, you know, we could, you know, potentially go back, or I could just potentially lock up the Board's first choice, but I'd like to have at least two options. And since it looks like that's probably not going to happen, the Board's okay to move forward with Beals and Thomas.
I am, I mean, I don't...
Yeah. Did you want to...
Do a motion?
Yes, I just want to kind of put a timeline on this, kind of like, if negotiations aren't concluded with Ty and Bond by a certain date, then we authorize the Town Planner to go forward to start negotiations with...
That's a good idea, give him another chance.
Tom, Beals and Thomas?
Beals and Thomas.
Beals and Thomas.
Yeah, which I definitely appreciate that perspective, the only thing is I wanted to have them locked up like two weeks ago.
Well, I think that two or three business days.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean? To let them know...
Yep.
Of our vote.
Okay.
Give them one last chance.
Sure.
And if they, if it's a no, that's, I think it's fair.
Sure.
Then go forward with Beals and Thomas.
Okay.
You're under the gun a little bit here with projects going on.
Well, we are under the gun with projects, I mean, one of which is Shellback, we've got to get this peer reviewed, so, I mean, that, obviously I've already spoken to the applicant, and we're going to open up the hearing tonight, but we're, they're expecting a continuance, so we can complete our peer review on that. The actually most time-sensitive one is Top Spin Way, which is that subdivision that we accepted the four men on. The reason why that's so time-sensitive is because they actually go to the Board of Health first, and presently they're on the Board of Health's agenda for November 17th, maybe the 19th? The 19th, in two weeks. So I'd really like to get that subdivision out the door to the new engineer. I mean, Friday's, Friday maybe, it's going to be a tight turnaround, let's put it that way, if we wait until Friday, but hopefully it's doable.
Have you, you've had a couple of conversations with them about this issue, though?
Well, we've been negotiating since the last Board meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to give them to Friday and today, just because...
They had to move forward.
Right, but it's, you know, they, they haven't formally said no, they've said not willing to, and I'd like to get them to be notified, this is it, you have until Friday and today to accept our terms, or we're going on to the next group. And it...
Enough of that, yeah.
I would be okay with that if I can start the, I can at least start the contract review process with Beals and Thomas tomorrow.
Absolutely.
So that way, if we get a no from Ty and Bond by Friday the end of the day, I can just execute and send Top Spin Way to them, because otherwise then we have the weekend, you know, and then they, they actually have to review that subdivision and get it, get their...
Is that a good plan?
Yep.
Do you want to authorize the Town Planner to do so?
So be.
Second.
Any more discussion? Um...
You're just, you're good with this, though, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, if we give Ty and Bond until Friday the end of the day, and, but I can still send Beals and Thomas a draft contract and get that all ready, so that if they say no, I mean, tomorrow, you know, potentially we could have ink on it tomorrow, but if they wait until Friday the end of the day to say no, we at least have a contract ready and can put ink on it as soon as we get a no.
Mm-hmm.
Brian, what about if they say, no, we don't want to deal with Mashpee no more? Do we have a Plan B for another, or do we go with that?
Well, I had a rather substantive conversation with David LaPointe this afternoon, and I just want to be mindful of the time, we have one minute to open up the public hearing, and that was, they're interested.
Okay.
They're interested.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstaining, voting no?
Abstain.
Karen abstains? Okay. Motion passes.
Great.
Seeing that the appointed time arrives, the Chair opens up the public hearing, the applicant is Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, the location is 524 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, Sessions Map 87, Parcel 4-0. The request is a special permit application to install a new personal wireless service facility, including 130-foot-tall monopole tower and associated ground equipment pursuant to Sections 174-24C and 174-45.3, and all other applicable sections of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. So I'm going to read the public notice. Hi, you can come on up. Thank you. I'm going to read the public notice into the record. This notice is, it's Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, this notice is given pursuant to the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, regarding a public hearing to be held by the Mashpee Planning Board under the provisions of Mass General Law, Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9, on Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 6:40 PM, in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to review a special permit application from Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, to install a new personal wireless service facility, including a 130-foot-tall monopole tower and associated ground equipment pursuant to Sections 174-24C and 174-45.3, and other applicable sections of the Mashpee zoning bylaw, at 524 Great Neck Road North, Sessions Map 67, Block 4-0. This project is subject to a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission for a development of regional impact review, which the Planning Board will vote on without public comment. The Planning Board will take public comment for the project when it reopens the public hearing after the Cape Cod Commission has completed their review and issued a decision. This was submitted by Mary E. Wagon, Chair, that's me, Mashpee Planning Board, the publication dates were Friday, October 17th, 2025, and Friday, October 24th, 2025. So if you don't mind, I'm going to hand it over to the Town Planner about what happens next.
Sure, this is pretty straightforward, I mean, the applicant's here tonight, and they're certainly welcome to introduce themselves, we're not going, of course, to discuss the substance of the project itself, this is just a mandatory DRI referral, the way Cape Cod Commission's regulations read, if it's a regular cell phone tower in excess of 30 feet, it's subject to mandatory DRI referral, and if it's a mono, and if it's a monopole, it's subject to, and it's greater than 80 feet, it's subject to a mandatory DRI referral.
Okay.
So...
So I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board, Jessica Bardey from the Law Firm of Robinson &amp; Cole, on behalf of the applicant, Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, thank you for having us tonight. And I guess with that, I would just respectfully request that the Board vote to refer our application over to the Cape Cod Commission for the DRI review and approval process to begin, but I'm happy to take any questions that the Board has at this time.
So in our packet is a rather large application, this we're going to reserve or later time. After that is the form, the Development of Regional Impact Referral Form. So what we need is a motion and a second, right, to refer the Verizon Wireless Mashpee 3. You want to read it off?
No, can be there.
Okay. I would accept the motion to refer the following project to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact project. The project name is Verizon Wireless Mashpee 3. The location is 524 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee. The applicant is Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, Wireless.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Like to skip discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstaining or voting no? Okay.
Thank you.
So that will go to the, just for the public to know, that will go to the Cape Cod Commission, they will publicly notice the town of Mashpee, I think via the newspaper.
Yes.
I'm wondering, I think they do a butters?
They do as well, butters within 300 feet of the...
Butters within 300 feet. They'll have public hearings, typically they have at least one meeting in the host town, so there should be one meeting in Mashpee. And then when that's all done, it'll come back to us, and then we'll likewise put a notice in the newspaper and notice the butters.
Excellent. Just a, oh, excuse me, sorry.
Do you have a form?
Yeah, I just signed it, and you'll get an e-copy when we send it over to the Cape Cod Commission.
That was my question, thank you. So you, the Board takes care of actually transmitting it to the Commission?
Yeah, we can do that for you. I mean, that...
Or do I, or do we, we do it with our...
That part's relatively informal.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 we'll, we'll send it over to them, and we'll see to you.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, see you in a couple months.
Sounds good, thank you.
Or more.
Or more.
You never know.
Too much more, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next public hearing is at 6:50, so we have six minutes, is there something else on the agenda you'd like to do, Brian?
We could potentially do the 18 Pleasant Park Drive, release for covenant, if the applicant's here now.
All right.
18 Pleasant Park Drive. No, they're not here now.
Okay.
So... And Madam Chair, perhaps we can inquire of Chris Crane if his engineers are here for the A and R, if they are, then we can take them first and get them out quickly.
Is the team for Gaffney Family Trust here?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Christopher Crane, representing the applicant, the Gaffneys. I don't know if the, my engineering team is here, or whether they're planning on being here, it's simply, these are two lots in New Seaberry, I think they're in the New Seaberry Special Permit Area, we're simply removing the lot line that bisects the two lots, and to create one larger lot. So that's really all, this is, we provided plans, my laws, so should have everything they need to...
Say that again, what's going on with the lots?
So they are two separate lots.
Okay.
We are removing the lot line that bisects the two lots to create one large lot.
Okay, I see, lot line being eliminated.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think a very important data point, Madam Chair, if I may, for this Board, is both lots individually are compliant under current zoning, they're both in excess of one acre, so they're just creating a singular lot that would be in excess of two acres. And my understanding, I don't want to speak too much for the applicant, but the rationale is they're building a pool house, and they want to hook the pool house up to the same septic, and they don't want the piping running between the two lots to be in violation of setback requirements.
I'm good with it. Anybody else have any questions? So I'd need a motion to endorse this A and R?
I'd make a motion to endorse this A and R.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. Anybody have a pen?
You need a Sharpie?
We need a Sharpie, you don't have one in your suitcase, do you?
For the mylar, definitely.
I don't know if we have a Sharpie.
And Chris Ball to the rescue.
This one, did you sign it, right?
No, I think we all signed it, I signed it first.
Yeah, everybody signs it.
Yeah, good idea.
Do you have any paper ones you want to sign?
I think just the mylar, so those are the ones that have to be recorded.
So just while that's going on, I just want to, just in general, talk about public hearings, okay? So as Chair, I open up the public hearing, I typically recognize the applicant to give a presentation of the project, then usually go to the Town Planner, and the engineer, and then Board members for questions. And I do that because a lot of your questions will get answered with that. Then I open it up to the public, everyone will be heard, I'm not going to, I'm probably not going to close the public hearing today, as you heard, we don't have a Board Engineer right now, and we need to have the plans peer-reviewed to make sure that they're sound and comply with our regulations. Because of the number of people that are here, I'm, I'm going to ask that when you come up, you state your name, where you live, and then make your comments, try to keep your comments to three minutes, if you go over five, I will ask you to wrap up. And, you know, if somebody made a really good point right before you, or a couple of people before you, just say, I agree with that, and then go on with your comments. For me, it's very beneficial to me to hear how many people feel a certain way, so I'm not saying don't repeat comments, but you don't have to repeat them all in the same amount of detail, if you know what I mean. Okay. So seeing that the appointed time arrived, has arrived, the Chair opens up the 6:50 public hearing, the applicant is Shellback Development LLC. The location is 647 Falmouth Road, 9 Shellback Way, Mashpee, Mass, Sessions Map 81, Parcel 132. The special permit applica, it's a special permit application to construct a 13,229, plus or minus, square foot specialty retail grocery store on 3.97, plus or minus acres of undeveloped land pursuant to Sections 174-24C and 174-25E1 and E2 of the Mashpee zoning So I would like to read the public hearing notice into the record, noting that the first public hearing notice was published in the newspaper on April 11th, 2025, and April 18th, 2025. And if I recall correctly, that was then referred to the Cape Cod Commission.
Correct.
Okay? So just like the last item, we referred it to the Cape Cod Commission, and then when it's done with the Cape Cod Commission, it comes back here. So this, this proposal went through the Cape Cod Commission, and there's a decision in our packet, it's a public document, all our paperwork in front of us is a public document, you can get anything that we have in front of us from the Town Planning Department. So now this project is back before us, so this is the public notice for this one. Mashpee Planning Board, Public Hearing Notice, this notice is pursuant to the Regulations of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, regarding the public hearing to be held by the Mashpee Planning Board under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, on Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 6:50 PM, in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to review a special permit application from Shellback Development LLC, to construct a 13,229, plus or minus, square foot specialty retail grocery store on 3.97, plus or minus, acres of undeveloped land with frontage on Falmouth Road, Route 28, and Shellback Way, pursuant to Sections 174-24C and 174-24E1 and E2 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw, at 647 Falmouth Road, 9 Shellback Way, Sessions Map 81, Block 132. This hearing was opened on April 30th, 2025, at 7:20 PM, and sent to the Cape Cod Commission for a mandatory development of regional impact review. The Cape Cod Commission had issued a DRI decision, and the Planning Board is reopening the public hearing, this was submitted by Mary E. Wagon, Chair, that's me, Mashpee Planning Board, publication dates Friday, October 17th, 2025, and Friday, October 24th, 2025. Okay, and so Brian, are you good with me recognizing the applicant?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I recognize the applicant, please state your name for the record.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the Board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Crane, representing the applicant in this, on this project. With me tonight is Mark Bogosian, he's the developer applicant for this project, along with his, I guess, project manager, Jeanie Fay, who's in the back. Also with me tonight is Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands, who is the applicant's engineer, as well as Erin Buckley behind me, who is the traffic consultant for the applicant. Given the fact that, you know, based on my conversation with Town Planner, the discussion tonight, you know, I'm not going to necessarily belabor all of the details of the project, because obviously this is going to be continued by the Board for peer review, we're going to be back at least one or multiple more times. This is a project that is probably five years in the making at this stage of the game, it's been before this Board, been referred to the Commission, back to this Board, referred to the Commission, finally, after a rigorous review by the Cape Cod Commission, the project received its DRI approval, and that is why we're now be here before the Board. So again, as the public notice states, we are here seeking a special permit under 174-24C, as well as 174-25E1, which is a store for retail of merchandise, and 174-25E2, which is an eating place within a building for food and beverage, so...
Can you say that again?
Yep.
Say that again.
174-25E1, which is a store for retail of merchandise.
Okay.
And 174-25E2, which is an eating place for food and beverage within the building.
Thank you.
So we are located in the C1 zoning district, which is a commercial zoning district, the minimum requirements for that district are lot area of 40,000 square feet, minimum frontage of 200 feet, front yard setback from Route 28 would be 75 feet, we have side yard setback requirements of 20 feet, a rear yard setback of 50 feet, because we do abut a residential zone, we have maximum lot coverage allowed is 25%, maximum height is 35 feet, maximum amount of stories, which is an applicable here, is two. Our site complies with all of your bylaw requirements, so the lot area is 173,051 square feet, which well exceeds the max, the minimum required. Our frontage, we have frontage on both Route 28 and Shellback Way, the frontage calculation is 352 feet and 49 inches, which again meets the requirement of the minimum side yard set, minimum frontage of 200 feet. As shown on the plans where the building is sited, we also meet all of your setback requirements, so this building is setback 75 feet from Route 28, it is setback from the sides at 33.6 and 100 feet, so that is compliant, our lot, your rear yard setback is 188 feet, which well exceeds the 50 feet that is required. Our lot coverage is 7.6%, well under the 25% that's max required, again, the footprint is 13,229 square feet. Our height is 34 and a half feet, which again is, meets the minimum, the maximum requirement allowed of 35 feet. As far as parking, for this particular project, the minimum required parking is 89 spaces, we have planned for 138 spaces, so plenty of parking on-site to accommodate this proposal.
Chris, do you have a plan on a board?
Yes, I believe.
Can you set that up in a way that the audience can see it?
Sure. If you want to...
And I think also, Brian, what we've done in the past is started, start on our webpage an application, where everything that we get is uploaded, so people can just hit a link and see these links.
Yeah, we...
I think we did that for the last few...
Yep, I think this one is up there.
Oh, it's up there, all right.
Yeah, yeah, we have pending applications, and we also have recently approved applications.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we found the zoning compliance?
Yes.
Charts on the first one.
I know. Make it easy.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
I figured, you know, go over that.
That's going out, that's going out.
You know, get under your, your special permit provision of the bylaw, you know, there's numerous criteria, you know, that obviously the, the project is consistent with state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws, not adversely affect public health and safety, will not cause excessive demand on community facilities, will not significantly decrease surface or groundwater quality or air quality, not have a significant adverse impact on wildlife and eschewing systems, will not have significant adverse impact on traffic safety and traffic flow... will not have significant adverse impact on traffic safety and traffic flow, will not have significant adverse impact on waterways, fisheries of public lands, will not have significant adverse impact on neighboring properties, will not cause excessive levels of noise, vibrations, electrical disturbance, radioactivity or glare, will not destroy or disrupt any species listed as rare, endangered, or threatened under natural heritage, will not destroy or disrupt any known historic or archaeological site, will not produce amounts of trash, refuse, or debris in excess of the town's landfill capacity, will properly dispose of stumps, construction debris, hazardous materials, and other waste, provides adequate off-street parking, will not cause excessive erosion or runoff onto nearby properties, and will not otherwise be detrimental to the town. You know, again, we've gone, go ahead.
I'm going to ask you to slowly cite that section of the zoning.
Sure, that is all found in 174-24C.
And that's like the special permits?
Exactly, that's your special permit criteria.
All right, okay, continue, thank you, sir.
You know, again, I think that this project meets all of those criteria. You know, again, we went through a thorough and vigorous review with the Cape Cod Commission, you know, dealing with open space, dealing with water quality. There's an IA system that's being proposed as part of this project. Did a, you know, a very thorough traffic study that's been reviewed on a technical level by the Cape Cod Commission. Obviously, will be reviewed by this board's, you know, consulting engineer through peer review. So again, we think this is, you know, a good project for the town. We think it meets the town's, you know, comprehensive planning as far as economic development by bringing in, you know, jobs, by keeping people buying local, and, you know, not, and, you know, again, just keeping people from going to Hyannis and other places.
Okay, you use the term IA. Can you explain what that is?
Yes, it's Innovative Alternative Technology System. So I don't know exactly what we're, what you use on a commercial project, but if this was residential, it'd be like a microfast system or a sludge hammer. But it's a, it's a system designed to reduce your nitrogen loading.
Yeah.
So it's more intense than your typical old-style standard Title V system.
Okay, any, anything else for your opening statement?
No, I think that that pretty much covers everything. Happy to, you know, answer any questions the board may have, and as I said, we have the development team here as well.
If somebody could just do a real quick summary of the plan that you put up, and grab one of the mics, if you don't mind, just in case somebody here hasn't-
You can pull that out.
Yeah, hasn't seen the plans. And your name, sir?
Mark Dibb, civil engineer with Cape and Islands Engineering. Want me to show both ways, kind of?
No, we have them in front of us, so just show the audience, please. Is that okay, guys?
Yeah.
So as Chris described, this is Route 28. This is the location of the building. It's setback to require it 75 feet from Route 28. The site will consist of a right turn in, right turn out only driveway on 28. There'll be significant upgrades to the bike path in that area. There'll be flashing warning lights, very detailed and designed crosswalk for that walkway. There will also be access off Shellback Way. The site has, throughout the entire site, has ADA accessibility. Ramps and walkways are even being improved out on Shellback, as well as pedestrian access through the entire site out to Route 28. The main entrance to the building is on this corner of the building. The parking lot is designed to just get people in and out and around. There is a loading area on this side of the site. There will be some porous asphalt proposed that allows leaching to go through the asphalt. There is also a bus stop proposed, similar to the bus stop you might see over the corner by Roach Brothers. There's a very significant landscape plan proposed. One of the keys to the landscape plan is this area, this natural buffer is being enhanced. Dead, we've, we identified every single tree in that area. Dead trees will be removed. Other trees might be enhanced. There's landscaping throughout the site. And then there's also drainage design throughout the site that will meet both the mass DEP stormwater management standards as well as Mashpee's standards. All, even roof runoff goes into vegetated swales, vegetated bio-retention areas for the proper treatment that's required in Mashpee. Septic system is out on this area of the site, and as previously mentioned, it will have a nitrogen-reducing septic system. Generally summarizes the site plan. I'll give it back to the board. Thank you.
Does, is everybody here on the board able to follow that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else before I go to the town planner? So Brian, do you, do you have anything you'd like to start us off with?
Sure. I'll say that I did not hear anything regarding Attorney Coran's. Chris, can you turn my mic up, please? I am. Chris, can you turn it up, please? Okay. I'll say that I did not see anything in, or hear anything in Attorney Coran's assessment of zoning compliance that I disagree with. I don't think the big issue for this project is going to be zoning compliance. I think the things that this board should very carefully vet are the criteria in 174-24C. And I, I think that's important because, you know, I do see a value add to a specialty grocery store in Mashpee. The big question is, is this location right for the town as proposed? If not, are there adjustments we can make to improve it in this location? And if not, then what are, what are our very valid reasons for saying so? So that's what this board's looking at. We do know that throughout the process in the Cape Cod Commission public hearings, as well as our department, has received a lot of feedback from the public. There are pretty, you know, clear categories of viewpoints. One is very much in support. The group that has made comments in support of this has, in particular, noted their support for Trader Joe's, which they're under the impression is a specialty grocery store. The group that has indicated consorts are primarily, or primarily consists of abutters. So whichever way this board decides to vote, my recommendation is to very carefully consider the application.
Okay. So now I'm going to go to board members to see if we have any questions for the applicant. So Dennis?
Okay, look at this plan. I know we're going to get it back to us, but-
Can't hear you.
Look at the plan. Where do the delivery trucks come in? Do they come off of 28 or go up at Shellback Way and come in there? I see, and the building, that's the closest path to where the delivery thing is.
Now we have a problem. They're going to turn the map to us.
I mean, the answer is the delivery trucks will come in off of Shellback Way.
Okay.
They come in up and to this area in the site.
My other question is, my other question is, you said it's going to be 34 feet high. I like, how come, I don't know why it's going to be that high. It's a grocery store. But if it is that high, do you ever think about putting apartments above it for the workers? Because you're going to have it 34 feet high. I mean, even if the store was 18 feet high inside where you shop, you still got another 14 feet to put apartments. And that's what we need too, in the town.
I mean, I don't know if this zone allows for a mixed use of that nature, but as far as-
You always could change that, I think.
So as the-
As far as the height itself.
Yeah, so the height itself is because of the ridge. We wanted to keep the design to meet Cape Cod-style building opposed to a flat roof. So a flat roof would have allowed us to be much shorter. But throughout the Cape Cod Commission and the design of the building, we wanted to have it have some, you know, doghouse-style dormers and character that when you see it, it looks like it's been here much longer than a new, big, flat-roof building. And that is in turn how that ridge line becomes at 34 and a half. So it's quite a bit more in the construction and the design, but we think the aesthetics is important of this project, so that's why that happened. We also wanted to comment on the loading and unloading. We wanted to make sure that happened in an area that it would not be intrusive to both the abutters as well as the customers. So if you look at the design of that, it's designed on the far side towards the front.
Yeah, I kind of already have some to show the people there.
So if you look at the design of that, that was pushed all the way to the front of the building. But from a facade from the street-facing, we designed that so when you drive by it, you don't see the loading dock.
No.
So if you look at that design with that wing coming off the building, that's in effort to design a building that doesn't have that grocery, that truck unloading be visible from all the surrounds as much as it's tucked in the back in an environment that's much more aesthetically pleasing.
There too, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Say again, Dennis?
The dumpster. The dumpster's going to be there.
That is correct.
I don't see the dumpster, Dennis.
Right there, the square.
I see a recycling room trash enclosure. Oh, is that the dumpster?
And we did, on that, we added an enclosure around that as well. Throughout this process, over the last five and a half years, we've looked at each detail. And in looking at each detail, you start to look at, you know, how do you make the project be the best it can be? And how do you keep moving it forward? And some of those things were, are going to be evident when you start diving into each detail and seeing, okay, there's dumpsters, they're tucked in the right location, and they have a surround with a fence that's lockable. There's recycling, there's also composting, there's all the things, as well as measures being put in place for rodent control and whatnot. So they've really, each detail is trying to be well thought out.
And one more thing. This project's been going on for about 20 years. Because when I was on the planning board for a long time, it came up a couple of times. They never went as far as the Cape Cod Commission. But the people in Shellback Way knew there was going to be a project there. Every five years, we'd come back. One of the reasons it didn't go through Mashpee Commons, we'll let them come on Jobs Fishing Road so they could have the access and wouldn't bother, you know, Route 28 and Shellback Way. But this project's been a long time coming.
Yeah, we appreciate that. And we're aware, when we purchased it and worked before we purchased it, all the plans and the development of the commercials location, we searched for a location that we thought would be best fit too for the tenant, specialty grocery store. So they, we really looked through everywhere in Mashpee and we're excited that this was a spot that meet a lot of those criteria.
I'm out, too.
Okay. Michael, would you like to go next?
Sure. I have some serious concerns about this. This Shellback Way entrance with 18 wheels, I'm sure I'm going to hear from some people who think they might be impacted by this. But it comes at an area where across the street, Chipotle's coming into being. We have a new development on Jobs Fishing Road and perhaps another development on the other side of Market Street. And this is, looks like a traffic nightmare to me, to be one. And certainly, it's going to impact the people in this neighborhood. I don't have any doubt about that. I mean, and the other thing that I'm a little concerned about is, I don't know what the name of the damn grocery store is. What is this place?
Trader Joe's.
It's Trader Joe's. And have you got a deal with Trader Joe's?
Yes, so we worked with Trader Joe's.
You have a deal with Trader Joe's? Do you have a signed agreement with Trader Joe's?
Yes.
Is it, do you have it with you?
No, it's a little bit bigger than this binder, but I can be happy to show you the details of that.
I'd like to, I'd like to have a look at it.
Yeah, so-
But there are other issues with this. I won't belabor them, but the traffic flow here is going to be interesting at best. And, and, and for the people that live the abutters on Shellback Way, it's, it's going to be, dare say, an issue.
I was going to say, I mean, this, this project was vetted by the Cape Cod Commission with a traffic study, with a traffic engineer. So these, these issues about traffic have been addressed and were addressed satisfactorily.
Yeah, well, to the Cape Cod Commission, but not to this planning board. And I just think we should take a hard look at this again because even though it's been in the works for 20 years, if it's starting to come to fruition, and now we know the name of the grocery store, which is kind of important to have, I think these other issues, and we'll hear from these people tonight, of their concerns, but mine certainly would be a butter impact and, and, and traffic issues in that area. It's a, it's going to be a busy place.
So a few things to answer to the traffic. And I would welcome to, our traffic consultant is here to help discuss that. And I think it'll be important for us to share all the, really the data, the traffic design and everything that went into this project. So early on in this process, we knew the Cape Cod Commission, one of their first questions was traffic. So we brought in, unlike some other projects that I've done that are smaller scale, we brought in a traffic consultant that specializes in understanding where is the best way to have the right traffic flow throughout the site. So that means everything from how do people, you know, what is a right turn only? But then what are the angles in which people won't do something illegally? Meaning if you put enough curve in and do it like an on-ramp, it makes people actually take the right turn only. If it makes it to a T, people start to do the wrong thing. When we start talking about the traffic, we can show with all these traffic studies. So the studies are going to talk about peak time, you know, Saturday morning in the, in the summer, but also, you know, the average weekday. So I think giving you the full presentation that we gave the Cape Cod Commission would give a lot more comfort to the traffic and understanding of what was designed here and the thought process behind it, as well as knowing that on a project of this scale, we wanted to choose and propose this in a site that was zoned for it, that met the, met the zoning criteria, and that also in the town of Mashpee, knowing is there, is there desire as a greater town in, as a whole? And that's where the Trader Joe's specialty grocery store, the design of the building, not trying to put too much onto the site. So understanding that, you know, as much as we would have loved to add more, you know, you look at four acres in, in area where you often see projects proposed with additional density relative to the 13,000 plus, you know, square-foot building, looking at a site to say, okay, let's make sure we have plenty of parking, plenty of, you know, different traffic flow. So at any point, we're happy to turn this over to our traffic consultant and really dive into that presentation, so if the board would like.
Could I make a recommendation there?
About the traffic?
Yeah, or about, about the best way to handle it from the board's perspective.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead right ahead?
I think we should definitely have our own peer review analysis on that and then possibly dedicate an entire evening just to traffic. Like, I think it's that big of an issue.
Would that be agreeable to everybody in the audience?
What did you say?
So what we're proposing is, all right, so this is a traffic impact study. It's pretty thick, okay? We're thinking that a, an evening where we have plenty of time for just this is appropriate. That would be a different evening than today. So I'm just kind of seeing if everybody in the audience is okay with that. I know some people, this is the only night they're going to be here for six months.
Do they have access to this, Brian?
Absolutely, that's available online. And the thought process there too.
So we're going to, we're-
It would still be okay for the public to comment on traffic this evening. We're just not going to analyze the technical data in depth this evening. We're going, the, the recommendation is to do that after we have peer-reviewed it with our own consultant. So we're not relying on the applicant's analysis and we're not relying on the Cape Cod Commission's analysis. We have our own engaged consultant looking at it.
Okay, that's what we're going to do. And I know somebody raised their hand in the back.
Just a quick question for Jimmy Salzner, that way, on who paid for the traffic study?
We'll get to that. That will be the first thing we talk about. Michael has the floor. Go ahead.
Well, I'm good now. I'm fine.
Okay, wait, I gotta, I gotta write that down. Okay, Karen?
Yes. This is a very interesting project. I love Trader Joe's. Everybody that I know loves Trader Joe's. The question that I have that will be answered in due course would be under the special permit 174-24C, is there an adverse impact in this project with respect to traffic safety and traffic flow? I've gone over- I've gone over everything that I could possibly go over. I will save my questions for next time. Cause all my issues are about traffic, traffic. Uh, question, have you received permission from MASH DOT to put that curb cut in?
We have gone through all the preliminary work with MASH DOT. It is not appropriate for us to get that final, we'll say curb cut if you will, until we are in front of your board. So we are, we are at a spot where they said, come back with your approvals and then we can move forward, but we're able to move forward with the plans, knowing that that will be approved.
So you believe it will be approved ultimately?
Completely didn't understand you. So wait a minute, say that again.
So the process with MASH DOT, and we can, our consultants can help answer this if, if I'm saying this wrong. The process, we have to, we work with them, do preliminary applications. We work to make sure it's an approvable project. Then we pause that and go work
Okay.
with the local
Boards.
Boards to make sure there's not any tweaks you'd wanna see with that, to then go in and finalize that. So we're confident with what we are proposing is allowable.
Okay. Okay, on the curb cut, just in case people in the audience don't know, the plan is to do a curb cut, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. A curb cut on Falmouth Road. Where if you're coming from the Rotary, you can make a right turn into the property. You can exit from that curb cut there, but you have to exit going toward Falmouth. So it's gonna be on, if they get it, it's gonna be on the road. So my, my issue is in looking at, my issues, in looking at the maps you did. Well, first of all, let me say this. You did do a crash summary here. And you indicate that Shellback Way, Deer Crossing, and Rockland Trust driveway has no high crash issues. But have you factored in what Mike's talked about, what's coming, which we believe is coming? The Mashpee Commons project and the forty B project on Jobs Fishing Road?
So during the traffic studies, we look at what is already in the works. So if anything were to come after the traffic study was, you know, you, there's dates in which we're out there. So we had to wait for certain times of the year to make sure we're not taking data in say a winter month opposed to a summer month. So we've factored in all data that was available to us. Um, so if something was proposed after our study was completed, would be the only data that wasn't there.
Okay, well, is the Mashpee Commons?
So the Mashpee Commons, that project we were aware of. I am, I am, the Chipotle.
Across the street.
Across the street, I believe was after that and is going in an existing space.
So the on commons forty B?
Not an existing space, they're constructing it now.
Construct, okay, yeah, so.
Well, I, I know what you're saying, cause it was, it,
Yeah.
that, that special permit for where Chipotle is going, did we say it wrong? Was already, it, it could have been captured in the traffic study, cause it was already part of a plan that was approved.
Correct, so that person, when I say existing, it wasn't existing building.
Double check that, okay.
I can have my traffic study or consultants speak to it, but anything that was previously discussed, planned is included into that traffic study.
You say in your report, and I don't, I don't wanna get into this too much, but I think what I want to help the public and to help all of us here is to have some map, you've done the maps here, various maps at different times. First of all, these are very hard to see. I would like you to do, the traffic engineer perhaps, to do maps that walk us through everything. Because we are going to see signal lights, we're going to see marks on the road in, in Mashpee Rotary. We're going to see eventually bicycle paths. We do have a bicycle path on Shellback. I mean, it's a sea, a sea, a sea of everything. It's just, you know, it's, it's for people who are of a certain age and start looking at this, they become overwhelmed. I, I just want to see.
Mashpee looking out in the audience.
I just wanna see, have an engineer walk us through this.
What I'd be happy to do is have our team create some renderings and drawings that may be overlaid onto maybe street maps or Google imagings of the area to give perspective. So where that shows the Rotary, which we can understand where that Rotary is.
Yes.
And it gives it a little bit more perspective. So during the presentation from our traffic consultant, I'll go ahead and add some additional, I'll call it renderings and illustrations, drawings that can help show, as well as different queuing of where cars are and where they're gonna be.
Right.
To give.
And you would cover in that presentation some kind of picture and overlay of all the mitigation that you're planning on doing?
Yes, I can also have it kinda walk through each thing. We have, um, you know, plus or minus a quarter million dollars worth of mitigation throughout for additional areas to improve traffic. And that's part of that process we went through with the Cape Cod Commission. So all of those positives that this project generates for the community as a whole, we can kinda walk through with each one of those are allowing based off going to the Cape Cod Commission.
That'd be great.
Just to, so Dennis asked if that can be put into kinda like a PowerPoint?
Yes.
So on that presentation, we can use the big screens?
Love to do that. We can make sure that happens.
Go ahead Karen.
Well, I don't wanna get into anymore now today.
No more traffic today.
But, um, I'm really looking forward to that presentation. That's been on my mind ever since I started looking at this stuff.
And I can assure the board that this is a project that we spent tireless amount of time making sure the traffic worked, working with our engineers. We have had multiple engineering groups work on it as well as our traffic consultants, in addition to the Cape Cod Commission's specialty traffic. Their, their process is rigorous when it comes to the traffic. It's a specific group inside the Cape Cod Commission that they're, what they focus on is traffic. So throughout that, you know, for the public to hear and for, I'm sure the board's more aware of it, but the Cape Cod Commission process, you work with specific groups or divisions inside that to make sure that you're meeting all their guidelines. And throughout that process, their traffic, you know, committee, subgroup, subcommittee, they were the ones that really made sure each thing was thought through. So we went through, we would do a traffic analysis, they'd ask for us to expand it further. Then we'd go expand it further, then they'd ask to update it with a different time of year. So these are why that this project, you know, there's numerous projects I've presented at different boards that, you know, I know are pushed through as we will, and it's a residential home or a small commercial site that, you know, you, you don't necessarily have the time and the patience to go through and say, let's wait for another six months to see what it is on a Saturday in July. And by doing that, we can make sure we're getting everything right and that we're accounting for it and that we have reputable firms that we're working with, as well as the Cape Cod Commission to verify those people and consultants. So it's, we're, we're, I, I'm excited to show you that presentation. I think it'll put a lot of people at ease.
Yeah, and make sure we understand all these maps.
I'll make, I'll make those look much easier to read.
Thank you.
I know the traffic consultants from the Cape Cod Commission specialize in traffic. Our traffic consultants specialize in traffic. So you have two traffic experts, you know, in this traffic, you know, project, where they go through every detail and great, you know, lengths. So it'll be, what I will work to do is take their hard work and all the methodology behind what they did and present in a manner that is easy for, you know, non-traffic expert to understand and be able to demonstrate that to the board and the general public.
And, and you'll particularly emphasize, because you say in your report, the project will result in additional traffic on Shellback Way and Route twenty-eight and increased delays at intersection of twenty-eight, Shellback Way and Charles Street. So that's gonna be the bottleneck there apparently.
Correct. What we wanna do is talk about the amount of the, what that delay looks like, how some of the delays are mitigated. So some of the, and without getting too much in the weeds on traffic, but there's, the delays are, and you'll see, you know, demonstrations of where the, where the queuing goes and where that, where the cars line up. In its seconds, we're talking, it's, it's, but the way lights are triggered and how often, you know, so there's numerous things that go into that and that is one of the reasons that this project requires us as the applicant to pay for a tremendous amount of work outside of the site, to make it so that traffic works properly. And that it's, there's a positive outcome after the end of this.
Thank you.
Okay. Dale?
I have a traffic comment. I have a traffic comment, but I think I'll save it for the, uh, traffic people to come in. But if you could just quickly touch on, maybe if you could touch on the, um, off-site improvements, traffic improvements on twenty-eight for the right in, right out. How do we, um, how do you plan on make, ensuring that that stays a right in, right out?
So one of the things that you look at when you look at traffic is not only what are you telling people to do, but how does it actually operate? You know, you often see some things that says, take a right turn, but you know people come out and they take that left. The main, the, the simple answer to that is if you look at the angles in which you enter the street. So if you look at that, when you look at your site plan, you're gonna see it turn dramatically towards the right. So you feel as if you're almost going, if you're going onto an on-ramp to a highway, the angles of which you enter that highway is meant so you don't go the wrong way. It, you wouldn't come to the end of an on-ramp on a highway and then do a U, you're gonna go back. You'd feel like it's naturally wrong. So that's part of the design and the engineers that we've hired, as well as the traffic consultants, they worked hand in hand to make sure certain things were in the design process to make sure that would happen. It was also meant so the viewing, so you'd be able to make sure cars would be able to see somebody coming from each direction as well as making sure we're maintaining that bike path. We're having a pedestrian, you know, actual, you know, walk symbol to be able to walk, even though there's not many cars coming in and out of that relatively. We wanted to do all these different items to make sure that, that would, people would take the right in and right out.
I'll have.
Okay, Rob?
Sure. I'll ditto, ditto, ditto. Uh, my concern is with traffic. Uh, I've looked at the plans online and your stormwater looks like okay. So traffic and traffic safety are utmost, it's traffic safety, traffic time delays or, or wait times type of thing of just pass through traffic, not, never mind being customers at the store. And then traffic frustration for butters and just, uh, people using the twenty-eight in peak times or even in off-peak times. I looked at your traffic studies, they seem to be adequate, I'm not a traffic person, but I've been to places on really peak times, including Trader Joe's in Hyannis, where traffic and the parking lot adjacent to the Christmas tree shop or, or Trader Joe's and the, the other buildings in the site left traffic out on, uh, one fifty-two, is it?
One thirty-two.
One, one thirty-two. And people going around making a hazardous situation. I could see on peak, very peak times, uh, the traffic on twenty-eight going into your adequately designed on-ramp or to the store entrance area being past Jobs Fishing Road light all the way up to Mashpee Commons. Backed up, consuming one lane of traffic, waiting to get into a very desirable store.
So, so to answer that.
So hopefully you'll, you'll have that answered, uh, and, and the follow-up with that, because there's a lot of activity going on there. Uh, several new housing developments on Jobs Fishing Road, uh, Chipotle going in there. Can you comment on what, if you've done anything to collaborate with any of your neighbor properties for overflow parking, uh, situations? Have you, you, you have two banks there? I don't know what their, you know, busyness is, if they are talking to you. Uh, I know Mashpee Commons is probably not really talking to you. But you have a, a, a parking across the street, additional parking, actually quite a bit on, on the other side of the bank. Have you collaborated with any of your abutting commercial entities? And can you tell me to what extent are they in step with you?
Yes, they are on lockstep. So we right away reached out to the abutting commercial, the banks, as well as numerous others in the area. A few things that people were all worried about is, hey, we really wanna make sure you have more than enough parking. So one of the things that we did, if you know this project, based off the, you know, guidelines, as we're required to have eighty-nine spots. Um, I believe we have a hundred and.
Eighty-nine.
Or eighty.
Thirty-eight.
Hundred and thirty-eight. So what our consensus from our butters is, let's just make sure there's way more parking than you need. Um, the other thing to comment on the Trader Joe's in Hyannis, that was an existing building and Trader Joe's has realized that they wanna go into the right site, that they have the right amount of space, that they have the right traffic flow. Trader Joe's is a very desirable specialty grocer because they do things properly. And one of the things that they wanted was a site that was conducive for this in a commercial area, that had the right traffic flow. So in addition to all of our traffic consultants, in addition to the Cape Cod Commission, commissions, Trader Joe's as a whole, they, uh, they're in, they're a very savvy company. They wouldn't, they've worked with us for the five and a half, maybe, maybe actually seven years since we first talked. Because they understand that in Mashpee, they have a demand from, they wanna handle the Mashpee demand. They don't, they, they already have their Hyannis store, that's there. They wanna handle the demand that's coming from the Mashpee area that's driving through the Rotary and they know that the size of the store, all these things are factored in to the demand that's local. And that's why this store checks a lot of boxes for them, but they've made sure on their internal team that this is a project that they're gonna have happy customers. And happy customers have good traffic flow, good circulation, a nice building in an area that's conducive for Trader Joe's.
But have you, have you made any solid arrangements with any butter commercial properties for additional space and/or traffic diversions, especially peak, peak times?
We haven't needed to ask for any help on their behalf. We've spoke to them and had great conversations, but in early conversations, us making sure, you know, looking at, making sure we had plenty of parking and that's where we added it on site. Because we have almost a four acre parcel, three point nine, some, so that four acre parcel, we were able to satisfy the butters and also they have, uh, expressed positive feedback.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have a question about, um, the site plan. So right now there's an existing road into the bank, right? But this site would be entered from a completely different entrance way, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, you talked about, um, vegetated swales, right? So any other examples of low-impact development on the site? So you've got the runoff from the, hi, the runoff from the roof. Like just go over a little bit about, uh, the nitrogen control for your stormwater.
Basically every square inch of both the roof and the pavement goes into some sort of vegetative treatment. And the vegetated treatment does TSS removal as well as nitrogen phosphorus removal. Um, I think that's one of the reasons why the town has that requirement that even roof runoff needs to go into a vegetated swell first. Again, we have some areas of porous asphalt, which just completely reduces runoff some by, um, percolating through the asphalt. Um, the entire site has very good separation to groundwater. Our test holes dug to fifteen feet never hit groundwater at this elevation of, in the elevation thirty-eight. Um, groundwater's down, um, relatively close to zero, you know, so we have a good ten, twenty feet of separation to groundwater. That allows the sand to also just do natural filtration. And again, we do have the nitrogen reducing, um, septic system proposed.
So that permeable asphalt, no stormwater is going onto it, right? It's just its own?
Yeah, it's on the edge, um, so any rain that falls onto it.
Oh, I see it. It's a different color.
Yes, it's on the, the colored.
And the gray asphalt, that goes into your stormwater system?
Correct.
All right. And then, um, I have these elevations, these were from April.
That's correct.
They're dated twenty twenty-two?
That's correct.
Have they been updated?
No, minor, uh, minor alterations, but no, we've kept with the same. No, minor, minor alterations, but no, we've kept with the same architectural plans. Those plans were designed in conjunction with the Cape Cod Commission as we were working through their architectural review subcommittee. So we made sure those hit that, that was one of the things we could check, we checked the box earlier in the permitting process. So we are still proposing the same architectural plans.
Okay. So as long as that's the most current-
Yes, so what we'll do is I can, I can provide a up-to-date, and I'll update the dating, so that way, any minor tweaks that have happened, we're not working on that set. So we'll, we'll go ahead and update a set with today's date or-
Lovely.
I also will point out, we have worked with a landscape architect to make sure that, one of the things we heard early on in, from the butters, was making sure there was natural vegetation in between the property lines. So that was something that, in our process, we also talked briefly about that when we were here in front of this-
Design review.
Yeah, design review.
It's like plan review, okay.
So what we did, we went ahead and added a, there, there's a great amount of vegetation in between the property lines. So that, you know, all, understanding that was important from the get-go, and we heard that from the butters, and we heard that during the design review. So there's items that you're seeing here tonight that are both from listening to the butters, but also meeting here in Mashpee, as well as the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay, because, right, so my proposed site plan, these are dated January 10th, 2025. So did anything else change?
I believe that will be the most, I think that's the most recent, we'll confirm that that is the case. There might be one, there might be some, I'll, I'll confirm all plans are the most recent plans.
Right.
Madam Chair, to, we obviously want an avaryment from the applicant to answer that question affirmatively, but I will say indirectly that I did have a conversation with Jeanie Fay, who is one of the project managers for the applicant, and she assured me that there were no updates or revisions to the plans. But we still want the applicant to confirm that on their own for the record, so.
So we can confirm that, and then what I'll do is make sure that the plans, like the architectural plans, in our presentation, I can add those to the slideshow.
Oh, good, good.
That way everyone can make sure that they see those architectural plans. I know that's not a conversation that I'm hearing a lot of, but we're still happy to do that.
Okay. And so I'm going to ask you to answer that one question that that gentleman in the back asked, and then I'm going to open it up to the public, and we might want to bring the podium out, just in case the project proponent wants to respond.
Sure, sure. And also, Madam Chair, there were a couple, when, after you've asked that question, there were a couple of points through the discussions that I think I might want to give the applicant an opportunity to hone in on before opening it up to the public, if that's all right with you.
So who paid for the traffic study?
We've paid for the traffic study.
So the project proponent, the applicant paid for the traffic study.
And just to give more clarity of that for the general public, as well as the board, this is a project that we are going to continually have to fund all aspects of. So there's, there's mitigation fees that are paid, there's traffic, you know, all these, so we have to bring in certain companies. So although we are a company that has civil engineers on staff, architects, engineers on staff, we've understand that bringing in, you know, the firms that have to work with the Cape Cod Commission, and then we pay those fees, just as we're going to be paying, and we can kind of get into that as we get through this process, of all the other mitigation fees and improvements that we'll be doing, that are beyond the site itself.
Okay. And I, I think that PowerPoint presentation should talk about that piece, the conditions of the Cape Cod Commission, including those two line items that had a cash mitigation.
Yeah, so we can talk about the cash mitigation, the off-site mitigation-
Thank you.
And how we came about with choosing our consultants and their background as well, so that way it gives more clarity and understanding of their expertise.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
On deliveries, can you assign them like early in the morning or late at night, instead of coming in at 10 o'clock and after the morning or 1:00? I mean, that would save a lot of headaches if the people that live in Shellback Way, there's no delivery trucks coming after 7:30 or something.
So typically, that would be, hey, would you accept a condition saying this, that, or the other thing? So maybe you can think about that?
I would have to-
You want to think about that a little bit?
On a lot of the things that I can and can't, so I'm often in front of boards with projects that I have the ability to be the end user. And as the end user, I can be very flexible and-
Well, this is what I'm going to tell you.
So I can research that and get back-
Write that condition, or we'll write it for you. Do you know what I mean? Like Chris knows us.
Yeah, so-
So just, just think about something that would work.
So that's what I, I guess that's where I, as a chair, I appreciate the way you worded that, because if it's in the condition, I'm not-
That would save a lot of problems.
Right. And we don't want to write something that's impossible, we want something that-
Yeah, we can work with you, and that's what, I guess my, my reason to bring that up early on in this process is, we're going to do our best to make sure this, and we are an advocate for this being a great project, so we'll always go back, get back to you with all the details we can. And also, wait to listen to, hear the butters, to see if that time of day would be more desirable, or less desirable to be at night versus during the day.
Okay. Now, Brian.
Great. Thank you, Dennis, for bringing up deliveries. It was just one of the things that I was not necessarily going to go in the direction of a condition with, but I was going to have the applicant maybe chat a bit about that. I'm glad this board has raised traffic, and I'm glad we all see how serious of an issue it is, and I'm glad we're amenable to doing a whole evening about it, as is the applicant. One request I would just quickly have of the applicant is the additional renderings, if we could have those well in advance of the meeting, so that they could also be pure reviewed, that would be fantastic. Then there's just three kind of areas I wanted to give the opportu, the opportunity for the applicant to briefly touch on before we turn it over to the public. And I'll just list all three and then, and then turn it back to the applicant at Madam Chair's approval. The first is if the applicant could chat a little bit about the photometric study and the impact of light on the butters, particularly the residential community nearby, and, you know, whether or not they can anticipate lights being active on the site, and until what hours in the evening? If they could chat a little bit about trash management and pest management, and the potential for the grocery store to attract additional pests. And then also, if the applicant would be so kind as to chat about the reality that we recently approved an update to our stormwater regulations, and we just want to make sure that that is on the applicant's horizon, because they may or may not have an impact on the project or principles, there may be principles embedded within them that the applicant may want to consider, and they may receive final approval before this project does.
And that was an update to our zoning by law or general by law?
Zoning by law.
All right. Big difference.
You guys-
Sure. I mean, I'll turn, the photometric and the, and stormwater management regulations, I defer to Mark, you know, I know they handled all that.
So the, the photometric is designed to be dark sky compliant, and it's got full cutoff lighting fixtures. It's designed to have essentially a zero off-site overflow of lighting. I think we can consider the comment about timing, lights on, lights off, a reduced lighting setting with the end user, that's something we can provide at the next hearing. I don't necessarily have that exact timing, so like, we can defer to, to answer that question. On the stormwater, we fully intend to meet both the state and town regulations. If there is something new, we will address it, and that will be part, it'll be addressed before the peer review, so that they can-
I appreciate that. We worked really hard, and it's part of our EPA permit, so it's super important, and I'm, I'm hoping it can be incorporated in. And trash management and pest management?
Yeah, I'm just going off of what, what was put before the Cape Cod Commission. The trash enclosure is fully enclosed structure, including the roof, constructed with the intent to be rodent-proof. The store will either be doing bi-weekly or monthly pest control, and consumable, and unsold food is, you know, donated to local nonprofits. Any non-consumables often, they say, go to farmers or, for composting, so.
So I'm sorry, this was part of the Cape Cod Commission decision?
Well, it was part of the, part of the, the discussions. So that came up during the Cape Cod Commission about pest management, waste, and things like that, so I know that was part of the discussions.
So a lot of the things that have come-
Is that, is that something you, you can write up for us and possibly put in, we might put that in as a condition?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, if that could be a possible condition.
Yeah, I would, I would, especially that it's particularly noble, the, the food donation is particularly noble in today's climate, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, that's what I was going to point out, is that we worked with the specialty grocer to verify all these items for the Cape Cod Commission, and that's when we got more information on the food donation process and donating towards farmers, as well as their pest control processes.
Okay. And Brian, will, will you make sure they have the, the zoning by law changes with respect to stormwater?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is pull out the podium and put one of the mics up there, in case the applicant would like to address something right away, and open up the table for the public to come up. One of our members is going to take a quick break, so anybody else can take a quick break? I see hands, so don't worry. Is, is there anybody that has to like leave right away that would like to go first? If there's somebody that really has a legitimate reason? Yeah, so you can, yeah, you can come up, and we're going to wait for Dennis, you can come up and warm up that seat. We're going to wait for Dennis to come back. And sometimes the applicant can like go right up to the mic, hi, Brian, hi. Sometimes the applicant can go right up to the mic and answer a simple question, but, you know, Chris knows I don't like debate. You know, that if, if we're sensing that this is an argument on principle, or aesthetics or something like that, you know, we'll, we'll back off of that. So you can come right up and, and try it out, but we're going to wait for Dennis. And do you, yep, I guess you can stand or sit, whatever you want.
Want me to start without Dennis?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm going to have you pause, just because Dennis isn't, isn't here. All right, so Brian, you, you, you're going to get them the moment of silence. And I didn't look at the website, so thank you for-
Oh, no worries, yeah.
Updating me on that.
Yeah. Hannah deserves the credit for that, she manages the website.
Good.
Um, we, we, we try to do everything we can to keep pending applications up there, and even the recently approved ones, it's usually-
She does it all the time.
Yeah, whatever, whatever apps are pending are on the webpage, and then usually it's like the last three recently approved apps we would keep up to. So whatever's like, the most recently approved, top three.
We're back.
Okay. So if you could start off by your name and your address, and then your comment.
Sure. Suzanne Laundrie, Q112 Shellback Way. Number one, I've been a longtime customer of Trader Joe's, starting with store number one in Pasadena, California. I do believe that this is a misfit for this location at this time. I have three questions. Will a 40-footer be able to negotiate the delivery entrance onto Shellback Way? Can they make that turn? Number two, what is the square footage allocation on the selling floor for the food and beverage eating area? We've been talking at Specialty Market, he brought up food and beverage, that there would be eating area. What is that percentage to square footage? And number three, for the customer demographics, what percent of the customers do they feel will be coming from Falmouth, Martians Mills, Catuett, and Mashpee? That has an impact to me on how I would be arriving. If I was from Falmouth, I would take a left at the traffic light and go in via Shellback Way. And I would leave doing the cut. If I was from Catuett, Martians Mills, I would be going around the rotary, I would be going in through the cut on 28, I would be exiting on Shellback Way at the light. That means then that approximately 50% of the traffic will be born on Shellback Way, and is Shellback Way designed for that? I'll let others speak. Thank you very much.
When you talked about the truck, are you talking about it going from Route 28 onto Shellback or Shellback into the-
We, we know, because of the delivery trucks from 28 going on to Shellback Way for the hardware store, how they park and how they leave. How will a truck go up Shellback Way to make deliveries to the store? Because we've heard the presentation tonight that all deliveries will be off from Shellback Way.
Okay. So if, if you or, or anybody from the neighborhood, you know, sees a truck misbehaving in that area in the next couple of weeks, take a picture of it and get it to Brian, so that we can see what you're talking about. Yeah?
Um, I'm sure that with the traffic studies, and when they have a 40-footer trying to make the bend, I see challenges.
Okay.
So, it's something to be addressed.
I've spurred some conversation here.
I just want to interject with one quick important point that I think is-
Why can we never hear?
Can I hear it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I feel like I'm like, almost, I almost have the mic in my mouth, though. That's what it feels like.
Go for it.
So, now I forgot my point. Hold on. Oh, here, here is the point. Many of the butters in the audience this evening, and, and just members of the public in general, have been paying attention to this matter from the beginning, and were participating in the Cape Cod Commission hearings. I just want everybody to know that this is an entirely new hearing and an entirely new record. So if you submitted anything, or if you saw anything submitted into the Cape Cod Commission record that you want this board to be, you know, reliant upon, or to in any way consider, you will need to resubmit it again.
Good point. Dennis, did you have a, a comment?
The thing with the hardware store, they really have no place but those 40-foot trailers. There's no parking. But the development, the grocery store, that 40-foot trailer is going to be off on their property, and you won't even see the truck, because the way the vegetation is going to be.
Okay, so, so I'm going to, I think that we have three questions, is the applicant willing to address those now, or do you want to, okay. You can address them now, or save them for next time, but it's better sometimes if you address them right away. So the 40-foot truck.
Yeah, so Dennis actually answered that question, I think your apples and orange is, analysis is very accurate, that the hardware stores, they are loading dock is used in a different manner than the way that the trucks are unloading from all the testimony that we've heard at other meetings, kind of on the street and not in a manner that is designed the way it should be. So our design for all the loading of trucks was well thought out and made sure that that would accomplish the goals of trucks being able to turn in and out, as well as have a place to unload that would not be in the west.
Excuse me, I don't, I think the concern was the turn off of 28.
Yes, sir. I've got it. So it's the turn off of 28.
Oh, yeah, you can-
Turn off of 28 to Shellback.
Onto Shellback.
Turn off Shellback.
Off Shellback onto the access road.
That wasn't the question.
So is that what I just answered, that it's the turn from-
Well, let's do them both.
So, so-
So, so from 28 onto Shellback and Shellback onto your property?
We can provide a turning radius plan. It's called, it shows the truck, it shows how the front wheels turn, the back wheels turn of the, of the trailer. The site has been designed to allow for that type of truck to get off 28 onto Shellback into the site, into the loading area, and then back out of the site. That can be one of the plans that we show during the traffic presentation.
It exits also through Shellback?
Correct.
What is the size of the fire truck, our fire truck? The length?
I couldn't tell.
Okay, so we'll put that, we'll put that-
We will have swept path analysis as part of the record. I think that this concern is for- I think that this concern is for, you know, long haul 40 foot trucks.
No, I know, I know what they're talking about, but you know, the fire truck, the fire department has to approve this. I think they have already, have they not?
So I want to respect the applicant, the, the person from, if you could, if you could write down your questions, we'll have some follow-up questions based on what the public.
Okay.
Um, they've been waiting, it's eight o'clock, I think it's their turn, I want to be respectful to that first person. So we talked about the 40 foot truck, she asked for the square footage of the area being used for the food and beverage. And the customer demographics.
I can get more details on the customer demographics. As far as the exact square footage on the food and beverage, it's a much small, it's a small section of the actual grocery store. So if I go into- And is the question where in the store is it located?
What, what square footage of the interior space will be used for food and beverage?
I can get more details on it.
Okay.
As you see it, it doesn't appear to be very much at all, you know, a few hundred. When they say beverage, do you mean the beverage, like the milk aisle?
No, we're, we're talking about, they're talking about e- eating in on the premises, so that would be subsection E2.
So it's just-
No, no, just food, food and drink on the premises, which is subsection E2 of the table.
I can get a more of a ballpark square footage based off what they're intending.
All right. Why don't you just come up? A gentleman, yep, we'll, we'll go boy, girl, boy, girl, I guess.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm David E. Gill, Q 111 Shellback Way, Deer Crossing. We're obviously here tonight because the Cape Cod Commission voted in favor of the project as a DRI and referred it back. A great deal of testimony was given at the hearings about major traffic and safety issues, as, as you're already hearing. But the commission decided that on a regional basis, the project should go forwards. And if you, if you listened to the hearings, if you went on Zoom and listened to the hearings and to the members' comments, it's almost like they had a conclusion and worked back towards it. You know, it was really, very upsetting that way. They really determined that the, the impact on the region was far more important than this small section of Mashpee. The traffic study was done for the developer by Bowman Engineering, but in the final hearing, it was disclosed that the commission staff and, and Mr. Bogosian confirmed this, worked very closely with Bowman to develop the traffic impact study. Now, I've never really heard of anything like this where an independent commission helped set the algorithms and standards and rules that would go into determining the traffic and completely developed the traffic plan that was in essence for the developer. I understand Bowman's being paid for, paid by the developer, but we were stunned that, that the Cape Cod Commission staff was on his, on his side as well. The traffic study basically projected an increase, and it depended on the time of day and the day of the week and so forth, but really about only a car a minute in the Shellback Way Route 28 intersection. Several commission members commented that the numbers made no sense, but voted in favor because of the regional impact and said that, and this is a quote of one of them, that Mashpee would have to figure out the traffic issues, to which I responded, thank you. Odds are that Shellback Way will be the only access to this property. The developer wasn't able to get a curb cut two and a half years ago and nothing has really changed. The only thing that's really changed on this whole design is his access road, it's not going around Rockland Trust, instead of it's at the top of the property, everything else is the same. So why would a curb cut make it now? That means that Shellback Way is it. Uh, and, and those of you who know Shellback Way know that it's a narrow road on a steep slope down to 28. The Deer Crossing condominiums, the upper and lower Deer Crossing Marketplace, Eastern Bank and Rockland Trust all enter this lower stretch of Shellback Way. Turning traffic currently creates a massive problem. Especially when in the summertime, you should see it when all the people are flocking into Ace Hardware to pick up their mulch and all this other stuff, and, and there's pickup trucks there and everything. Everything backs up way onto Shellback Way and actually out on Route 28 as well. And that happens all year long. My recommendation, to be honest, is, is certainly listen to the developer's presentation about traffic, but I think eventually you're going to wind up having to do your own traffic study. Because any traffic study that he presents to you was paid for by him. Do you think he's going to present a study that disagrees with him and it says, no, you can't go forward? Additionally, the proposed site access road off of Shellback Way onto the site comes out across from the Ace Hardware loading dock, which is another problem. And, and I mean, the developer's staff has said, well, maybe if they'd actually used the loading dock and parked their, backed their trucks into it, then they wouldn't have to park along Shellback Way. Well, the problem is it's almost directly across from the access road. So what's going to happen? An Ace Hardware semi is going to have to come in and back into a loading dock. It's not deep enough. The cab of the truck is still going to be out on Shellback Way. That's why they park where they do, right out on, on Shellback Way lengthwise. The access road that he's proposing will need to be dug into the steep hill behind buildings A and B at Deer Crossing and down a steep, steep slope. Uh, I'm not an engineer and I don't know how they're going to safely build this, but if-
Say those building numbers again?
A and B, buildings A and B.
Thank you.
I don't know how they're going to safely build this, but if they do, they'll need to certainly put at least a retaining wall into the hill beneath the Deer Crossing property line. And I hope we don't have some massive rainstorms that cause the whole thing to just slide down the hill. Just a couple of quick comments, one is, I think somebody should talk to the fire chief about this. You know, a regular truck maybe can make it, but what about a ladder truck? I mean, we're still talking a building that's going to be, I forget what they said, 34, 35 feet tall. They may need a ladder truck. A ladder truck's a whole different paradigm when it comes to entering a, a right-hand turn. And what happens if there's a lot of traffic on that road, which, you know, Trader Joe's, there probably will be a lot of traffic on that access road. How do they go, how is it going to happen? What's going to happen if emergency vehicles have to come up to the Deer Crossing condominiums or school buses? You know, people think of Deer Crossing as, you know, an over 55 housing, it's not. We have young families there, we have school buses. You know, finally, I'm not opposed to a new market, not opposed to a Trader Joe's. Just put it on a site that won't be jammed in creating major traffic and safety problems. Thank you for your time.
Let's see, I just wanted a note to everybody what Brian said. If you made testimony or gave information to the Cape Cod Commission and you want us to consider it, we won't be watching the Cape Cod Commission meetings or looking at those minutes. You need to send them in to us independently. The Cape, the final decision is in our packet and will be part of the record. And yes, the fire department will review the plans. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Weiss, Deer Crossing, number G 43, resident owner. And I want to thank you, Madam Chair, and planning board.
Yeah, put the mic right in front of you, it's just so everybody here and everybody at home can hear you.
Okay, okay, better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, great. Deliveries, I want to continue that conversation because I don't think some of it has been as thorough as I'd like to see. There's been no mention of hours this time. There were, were mention of hours the first time through. The mitigation, traffic mitigation memo of 2022 10-7, on page three had a DRI objective number one that deliveries were going to be between 4:00 AM and 9:00 AM, 9:00 PM and 11:30 PM, and then other times throughout the day.
So that's in the DRI decision?
That's, that was the objective and that was from 2022, the first time this project hit, not currently. There's, there's no delivery hours mentioned at all in the current proposal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There is off-site only, but, and the only reference to scheduling off-peak hour deliveries was in 2025 June 27th, which is the Falmouth Road Market Staff Report.
Okay.
Okay. We need specific information on that because that was also brought up a little bit earlier tonight. And a question about the new, there's a newly proposed, or I should say pass noise by law, which I'm assuming when these trucks are going to be backing down, and I'll get to this 100 foot loading ramp, they're going to be making those traffic, reverse traffic signals. And I don't know whether there is a conflict of a noise by law vis a vis beep, beep, beep. So that's a question that I have. Okay, onsite, the proposed onsite bus stop and shelter clearly adds to the Shellback Way traffic from the access road into Trader Joe's. I mean, you're, you're talking loading trucks and you're talking a bus stop with a bus shelter. Now, there's a conflict here because in 2025, January 13th, Exhibit 17, the economic narrative on page one, it's noted that they will coordinate with the CCRTA to provide a formal stop at the site along the bus route. However, in 2025, June 27th, the Falmouth Market, Road Market Staff Report on page 12, if I'm going too fast, I can slow down.
Well, I hope you, you, you give these in writing.
Okay, I will, I will.
Do you know what I mean?
My, my printer died unfortunately, but I can send it in. Okay, so, so what it says later in the June handout, the, the June staff report was that the project is coordinating with the CCRTA to potentially install a bus stop and a shelter onsite. And that's the one I'm referring to, I mean, that instead of having one stop on 28, that's going to just add to the traffic onto Shellback Way. So that's another aspect. Another one is that 100 foot loading ramp that is along Trader Joe's and that is facing parallel to Shellback Way. So it's in between Rockland Trust and Trader Joe's, in between the two. And deliver, the drivers are going to be facing Deer Crossing condominiums as they reverse into this loading dock to unload, which again talks about sound pollution, if indeed there's a, a four o'clock delivery in the morning. Also, if you look at page five, there's a roofing plan on the elevation set. And by the way, the, Mary, you mentioned that there was a 2022 September 15th elevation. The 2025 February 11th is the same. So it's, it's the same redated to 2025, just FYI. And, and so I just want to bring up the fact that that elevation, I'm sorry, the ramp is parallel to Shellback Way and I don't know what it's going to mean for backup delivery trucks at four in the morning or at 11:30 at night. And then finally, and this may be a future, and that is the roof mechanicals, because that's an added noise pollution unless they're dampened and they are shielded. Page three, the roof plan on the elevation set, there's the location of exhaust fans, HVAC equipment and refrigeration equipment to be coordinated with the tenant. I think it needs to be coordinated a little bit more if it gets that far. And finally, just want to say I love Trader Joe's. Ever since it came into Brookline where I lived for a number of years, I was probably first in line and I loved Trader Joe's. So I'm not adverse at all to the grocery store, I'm just adverse to it being in this location, that's all. But thank you.
Okay. Yep, well, we're going to go boy, girl, boy, girl, so I'm going to, I'm going to go to the guy in the green.
Hi. Hi, folks. Put this up here. Theo Collins, I live at B9 Shellback Way. Just a couple of things. One is, oh gosh, where do I start? Okay, so my understanding is this is a, to get away from traffic for a second, my understanding is this is a marine water recharge area for Poppin' us at Bay, which is nitrogen impaired. I think last time I, latest documents I've read, even up to 2022, 2023. And I have a question about the nitrogen contribution of the project. So I understand that the project will be adding, I think around 24 kilograms a year of new nitrogen inputs and that's based on all the wastewater, stormwater runoff. I think I remember reading that there's a nitrogen offset, a nitrogen loading offset that's to be paid. I just want to know what that process is, who do those payments go to? What is, how, what's the work that ends up going out for that payments? Is it worked in through a property tax burden? I'm not sure how it works, I'm just curious about how that works. And I'd like that on record for all of us so we can learn about that. The second, again, having to do with traffic, I kind of just want it to be a little bit on the record that the more projects we have, what we're talking about, parking issues and very legitimate things like parking, access, things coming in from Shellback Way, the general gist of this is as we build up, we're making this area more and more not amenable for pedestrians. If you want to get around on 28 in that area between Shellback Way, Mashpee Commons, yeah, there's one, there, there's a, there is one road with a sidewalk, but in general, that area is really hard to navigate as a pedestrian. This whole, it, it's not a neighborhood, it's hard to get around this area as a pedestrian. Totally understandable, I knew what I was signing up for when I lived here. But I just want that to be on record, I want people to think about the choices that we make. The more we develop in this way, the farther we are from getting from a more walkable area. We're depending more and more on vehicle traffic, we're thinking more and more about vehicle access, vehicle traffic as opposed to walking. Like, who can be out there, is it young people? Is it elderly folks? Or is it just going to be anyone who has a car? So, that's all I wanted to get, so.
Okay, and so I'm going to put in the parking lot that whole nitrogen discussion just because we don't have a board engineer at this time. And that would be, I did read a little bit about the offsets. And if, if we could contact the town manager's office about how those nitrogen offsets are used, that cash does, is it not, does not come into the control of the planning board? I think it's usually a vote by the select board. But if you could confirm that, how that, how about those mitigation funds? How, how are they tracked and how are they used by the town? That's an excellent question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, just to comment on the walkability of that. So we made sure in the design here that we had numerous ways to access the site and one of those was by foot and by bicycle, so we have bicycle racks, there is the bus stop, and then there's also sidewalks, so we've made numerous updates and enhancements that are allowing ADA sidewalks on all aspects of the property to allow people to be able to walk in there. And if they're even walking through the property, they're going to have a nice environment to walk in and out of.
Can you make me a slide about that for your presentation next time?
Happy to do that. We'll make a sidewalk in pedestrian slide.
There's a lady in the pink. Oh, you, can, can she go first? Okay, yep, thank you. Hi.
Hi. Brianna Latendra, I live in Johns Pond Estates. So I'm here just to speak on the future, I have a young son, he's here with me now, I'm a single mom. future. I have a young son. He's here with me now. I'm a single mom. And honestly, I think we're, I understand certain aspects, I do. But the problem is, is that I don't think we're seeing the whole future. I've worked for a lot of property management throughout my career, and one of them being a really big place in Mashpee. And these same type of issues have come up. And I think we all benefit from this large facility in Mashpee that houses a lot of shops and whatnot with walking. And I think as items are checked off and the developer gives us some more detail, I think we have to think about our children and what it's going to do for them. You know, my son is in third grade. He's, he's not in the job market yet, but he will be. And to have him go to Mashpee schools and get dropped off by a bus in front of Trader Joe's or somewhere to work a job at 14, 15 years old. The problem is, is that, yes, we're building, but we need to build for that future. We don't need to stay in a box and just say that, you know, we love the foliage. We love, we do love that. I'm not saying that we don't, but I just think it kind of gets passed over a lot. So I just ask you guys to think about our kids, the future, and, you know, what it can do for them, too.
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, now the lady in the pink. She's had her hand up longer than you. Hi.
Hi there. I'm Annie Tabor. I'm in B14, Shellback Way. I first want to say thank you very much for asking, what is the name of this place? Because five years ago, it was Trader Joe's, now it was Falmouth Specialty Market, and there's the back and forth. So I appreciate it. I've listened to all the Cape Cod Commission presentations, the developers' presentations, and I will only say ditto to everything about the traffic and everything about the fact that there were a number of people on the commission who shook their head and said, nah, I don't quite know that that's correct. I'm not quite sure why we need another grocery store. We've got Stop &amp; Shop, we've got Roach Brothers, we have a specialty store in Mashpee, all within easy walking distance, all with similar pricing, some maybe a little higher than others. But I think that Trader Joe's isn't necessarily that much less expensive to have another store there. The one thing I have asked numerous times on the calls when I had an opportunity to speak was, I hear about your development for a long 28 and a long Shellback Way in terms of beautification. You rarely mentioned, or you've never answered the question of what are you going to do for those of us that live in Deer Crossing, Buildings A and Building B? What about, Dave mentioned, what happens when it rains? What are you going to do back there in terms of plantings? A wall, whatever you can do. I'd like to see something that shows how that's going to be developed to protect our community from what's going on down below the hill. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Alana?
Hello, members of the planning board. My name is Alana Doyle, and I live on Sunset Strip. I look forward to hearing the traffic study presentation, because I think there are a lot of valid questions that hopefully will get answered. But I did want to speak tonight as an avid supporter of Trader Joe's and how I think it will benefit our community. I became a vegetarian shortly after my 13th birthday. It's hard to believe. That was already almost 20 years ago. Looking back, I think I ate grilled cheese every day for the first year. After being introduced to Trader Joe's, it changed. Long before there were endless meat substitutes, Trader Joe's offered more options to fit my lifestyle than I could imagine. When I became a parent, organic options and artificial free options became paramount. Once again, Trader Joe's offered ample options that met all my standards while maintaining a wildly reasonable price. Seriously, where can you get an organic pizza made in Italy for less than $5? In times such as these, we should be welcoming grocery options that provide quality food at affordable prices. There's no doubt I am team bring Trader Joe's to Mashpee. Now, I think most of you know that I run the Mashpee message, one of those social media groups for our town. For those that don't know, we have close to 11,000 members. I wanted to share some of the overwhelmingly positive remarks when the rumor of Trader Joe's in town first broke back in 2022. All right. Oh, my God, you made my day. Great. This is awesome. I love the one in Hyannis, and this is closer. Yay, yay, yay. I drive weekly to Hyannis. This is amazing. Cannot wait. That would be awesome. Awesome news. I cannot wait. This is the greatest store, and I'm so excited. This made my day. Looking forward to this huge asset coming to Mashpee. We need more options for affordable foods. TJ's is a perfect fit. No more stocking up on goddess dressing and frozen goodies. I'm so excited to hear this. I've heard it before, but it was beginning to think it was a rumor. Their prices are great, and it won't take business from other grocery stores. It's totally different. Cannot wait. This is so exciting to see and hear again. Can't wait. Beyond excited. Love that store. This is where I'll be shopping every day, getting groceries. It's about time. I hope this is true. Going to TJ's is one of the only reasons I go to Hyannis. Oh, my God, yay. I hope this is true. And last, awesome. Make it easier to get good, cheap, healthy food instead of driving to Hyannis. Trader Joe's in Mashpee will be a blessing. They are a great company to work for, pay well, and offer good insurance. Their prices are extremely reasonable, all positives for our community. Thank you.
I saw a whole slew of hands. I'm going to go three guys in a row. So John Miller.
My name is John Miller. I live at 144 Shellback Way. I also have had a business in the Deer Crossing marketplace for the last 25 years. And with all due respect, no one has reached out to me when somebody was asking about your relationship with the Butters to the property. But I would welcome that if you were so inclined. Just an aside, I think one thing to take into account here as you evaluate this is the topography of this parcel, which has not come up either at the Cape Cod Commission or here so far, as far as I know. This whole back portion up here that abuts Buildings A and B at Deer Crossing is highly elevated above where the parking lot would be. So even though they're proposing extensive plantings and so forth to help screen that area, the people that live in A and B, I think, unless the trees are 100 feet tall, which they wouldn't be for centuries, are going to be looking down into the parking lot from that elevated space where they are. Plus, when they relocated the access road rather than sharing the easement with Rockland higher up, it's almost directly across, as someone said, from the loading dock at Ace Hardware. But it's going to require a tremendous amount of fill to make that road passable, probably with retaining walls and so forth. So there's a lot of topographical engineering that's going to go into it. I did want to clarify one thing that I think I was happy to hear, that none of what was discussed, presented, or concluded by the Cape Cod Commission is relevant to your deliberations here. Is that correct?
The one thing that we've put in to the record is the Cape Cod Commission DRI decision. And the reason why we need to do that is because we referred it to the Cape Cod Commission. So we have to prove in the record that that process is over. So that's part of our record. And yes, we can consider it. What Brian wanted everybody to understand is that that's the piece that we've received as a board to put it into our record for consideration. So if somebody did a detailed analysis or had had a lengthy comment to the Cape Cod Commission, and they want us to consider it, even if the Cape Cod Commission did not, you need to put it into us, into the planning board as well. So that's where that stands. John?
All right. I'm a little confused on that point, but like several others here today, I participated in or listened or watched to most of-
Do you want Brian to unconfuse you, or?
Well, I'm hearing a little bit different nuance on to whether-
Well, why don't I pass it over to the town planner? So I don't want to confuse-
I don't need a comment at this time. I would rather have my say, and then you can take it up on your own deliberations. My take on the Cape Cod Commission's approach is, most of the work was done by a subcommittee, which is comprised of, I think, seven people that are members of the Cape Cod Commission from every town on the Cape. The one exception from Mashpee chaired the subcommittee, Ernie Vergilio. But as chair, he was pretty neutral on any discussion that took place. So everybody on the subcommittee that did the grunt work relied heavily on staff. That's my observation. And then when the conclusions were reached and they presented it to the full commission for the approval of the DRI, the commission itself, not knowing anything to the contrary or any of the underlying detail, basically rubber stamped a favorable report from the subcommittee, in my opinion. It was also troubling to me that none of the dozen or so DRI criteria, which is similar to what's in the special permit by law here, are weighted in any known way. So traffic, which is the gorilla that we're dealing with now, was given the same consideration as landscaping, or environmental concerns, or desirability of having that kind of business in the neighborhood and so forth. That does not make good intuitive sense to me. Regarding traffic, I also submitted some written comments that you may or may not have. But I strongly recommend, as has others, that the town of Mashpee undertake an independent, comprehensive traffic study. Maybe the Bowman report could be an input to that process, but it's certainly not definitive without looking at the whole spectrum of what's going on on both sides of the rotary, Mashpee Commons. We have 11 buildings with 54 units under construction now on Jobs Fishing. We have a proposal for an almost five-story apartment building with 65 units at the intersection of Jobs Fishing and Route 28. We have a Chipotle, which is not replacing a restaurant. There's still a vacant restaurant space there, so it could be in addition. Mashpee Commons owns the property on the south side of Route 28. Eventually, something will happen with that. So I would think it would be prudent not to look at just the incremental impact of traffic from Trader Joe's, but the collective convergence of all of this traffic that in the next year, or two, or three, or five, or 10, is going to totally change the character of the town and this whole area, not just with respect to traffic, but everything else. I am yet to meet anyone that doesn't love Trader Joe's, myself included. I'm with Alana on that one. This is just not the best location for it. It is the location because the developer owns that parcel and has an agreement or will have one for Trader Joe's as a tenant. So he benefits from building it. He benefits from collecting rent on it. And he has an asset that might be more valuable to somebody else in the future. Arguably, maybe the industrial park is an equally good spot to service the Trader Joe needs of this neighborhood rather than this congested area on Route 28. Finally, I would, if you're not planning to do it already, planning, I would suggest a site tour, much like you did with the On Commons LLC project, involving police, fire, town officials, engineers, water department, and so on, all of whom I think would have a stake in evaluating the appropriateness of this. And one other aside, this portion of Shellback Way between Route 28 and basically the top of the hill where the condominium project starts is a private road. It's not a town road. Its ownership, as the developer can attest and other studies have concluded, is owned by the four Butters. That would be his property, Rockland Trust, Eastern Bank, and Hajar Management that owns the Deer Crossing Shopping Plaza. So maintenance is going to be an issue. It already is. I can't imagine those four parties easily agreeing to who's going to foot the cost of maintaining this road with this increased traffic in particular. The Bowman study, if I'm not mistaken, said that 90% of the traffic exiting Trader Joe's will exit by Route, by Shellback Way onto 28. Only 10% would use the right-hand turn if there is a curb cut to head toward Falmouth. So think about that. I don't know how many cars per hour that would add if 90% of the traffic is coming down that road, not to mention the impact on road maintenance and tractor trailers and deliveries and on and on and on. You got the picture. So I think that covers the points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge that, John, and maybe some of you, you can come next, come on up. But I just want to, yep, come on up. I just want to note that we haven't gotten to written comments. We probably won't get to them tonight. But we will either read them out or summarize them at some point during the public hearing. Hi.
Hi.
Oh, Brian, did you want to say something, or do you want to wait?
I just wanted to make a quick point of clarity.
I'm sorry. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
So Madam Chair, to succinctly summarize my comments regarding recreating a new record, I just wanted to make a nuanced point that, and reiterate that we will, we will be having our own peer reviews of all of the reports. And I also do like and second the idea to do a site visit for the board.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thanks for running this meeting. I appreciate being able to approach you here. And you're running a very good meeting.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dave Scott. I live on 19 Flat Pond Circle in Mashpee, resident here for over 15 years. I have an engineering background. And looking at the site plan, I'm very impressed with the way that it is put together. There's a lot of thought that went into this. You can tell with a lot of input that went into this as well. Also, too, the architecture seems to fit into the town very well. It doesn't stand out as something different or a flat roof. That is very important. Obviously, I'm very much in support of this, of this project. And lastly, I really appreciate that the tenant, the developer, has found such a responsible tenant that will be occupying the space. They are a highly respected company, and I think we all recognize that. Last thing I just do want to mention is that I do hear a lot of things about Ace Hardware. And it does sound like there needs to be something that needs to be done in relation to Ace Hardware that's unrelated to this. But as you mentioned, maybe some pictures would help to clarify what the issues are with Ace Hardware. But again, I appreciate you considering this, and we strongly support this project for Town of Mashpee. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you gentlemen, and then we'll go to the lady in the pink in the front. Hi.
Good evening. Thank you. Paul Tanguso, C15, Shellback Way, Deer Crossing. I certainly can appreciate the excitement about Trader Joe's, but I'm also concerned very much about traffic congestion and public safety as a result. I would want to think that the planning board, right, I don't want this to turn in. I get concerned when I hear there's a lot of Deer Crossing residents here, of course, because we would be directly impacted. But I don't want this to be a Deer Crossing versus Development versus Trader Joe's. I think that when you look at this from a public safety perspective, it really is going to impact, or I would assume that the planning board looks at public safety from the standpoint of anyone who visits that area is potentially going to be impacted by public safety and traffic issues. So even all the folks that are excited about Trader Joe's, when you go into that area, you're going to be at risk because of the increased congestion, et cetera. And then the only other comment that I want to make is that I know that the traffic study that assumes that folks are going to follow prescribed traffic routes, that means stay on Route 28, go up Shellback Way, take a left at the lights or a right at the lights, whatever it might be. But the one thing that I've seen, and I think we're all a witness to this, is that today's drivers are increasingly distracted. They're impatient, they're more aggressive, and basically feel that the rules of the road, no matter what signage or queuing you set up, they want to make their own rules. They do their own thing. We see that every day. That is reality. And my concern is I haven't heard anything, or I'd like to have the board at least, take a look at the informal or unsafe traffic routes that are going to develop as a result of human nature. Folks, when they come up from the Falmouth direction, I am convinced, they're not going to wait for the light, they're not going to wait for the left turn, they're going to go right through the retail area that houses Ace and the bank and all those sorts of areas. We've already discussed, I'm not going to mention this, about the Ace Hardware area there. It's very narrow. There's a lot of near misses now with the limited traffic that's there. But if you have folks that decide to take a shortcut through that retail outlet area, now they're going to be crossing over Shellback Way- now they're going to be crossing over Shellback Way to go into the Trader Joe's entrance on Shellback Way and exit the same way, which to me is more of a risk because you can't see someone coming. And again, like I said, I think that's a big risk. I don't know about the cutback that was mentioned as far as en route 28, whether that'll be approved or not, but I also see some issues there where I really do think that if you do have that entrance and exit off of 28, you're going to see people making invalid U-turns. People do what they want today, and that's just the way it's going to happen. And you'll say, well, you're kind of, you know, making up things that aren't going to happen. And just my last comment, our daughter lives in Milford, Massachusetts, and they put in a shopping area, and it's exactly the same thing, two lanes one way, two lanes the other way, and they have a right turn only in, a right turn only out. I can only tell you the number of times, and I'm not going to say it happens all the time, but I have seen at least a handful of times where people don't want to go to the lights to wait for that five-second or 10 seconds for the light. What they do, they put their blinker on, they block traffic because they're going to go in around that cutout, even though they have to make a loop, but to them, it saves them time. Okay? So those are just my concerns. Again, nothing against Trader Joe's like everyone else. I love Trader Joe's, but I think traffic safety is going to affect everyone, even including those people that love Trader Joe's. Thank you for allowing me to come.
Thank you, Paul. [applause] Yep, I'll go to you in the back, and then the gentleman in the plaid shirt. And there was, did I miss somebody?
Yeah, he was over there.
Oh, sorry. After the plaid shirt, you can... Hi.
Hi. My name's Lynn O'Hara. I live at 110 Emes Landing Road in Mashpee. I've been a resident here for 30 years. Out of the gate, I'd like to say I'm here to support this project. I think the developer is, has been listening to what everybody here has had to say. They are considering the environmental impact, the traffic impact, the even dark, dark skies. Now, I don't know about anybody else here, but I like to go look at the stars. And I've noticed that the town of Mashpee has not been addressing that issue, but they are, they're trying to be a good neighbor. This lot is deemed commercial, correct? The town of Mashpee has a plan, a developmental plan, and everybody who has all these traffic concerns, something will go there. Some business will go there. There will be traffic in and out. This is not a bar. They have their hours. I've seen, we have Virge Brothers, we have Stop &amp; Shop. I've never seen an issue with the trucks. I've never heard the trucks. They do their business off hours. It's not been an issue. I think we really have to consider the benefits that this is going to bring to this town, the jobs that this is going to bring to the town, and the fact that the people that have been working diligently for so many years on this project are listening, and they're trying to do their best to be a good neighbor, to do what we want, to make sure that the people in Deer Crossing are comfortable. They're putting extra vegetation there, and I don't think, what else can we ask of somebody who's going to be using that property? I don't think there's much more we can ask than somebody who's trying their very best to do what they're doing, and bring a great store to this neighborhood, great prices, and like Elena said, I agree with everything you had to say about the store. I shop there all the time. I take my business to Hyannis to go there. It'd be nice to have it here. We have Life Neighborhood where a lot of people walk. I walk. It's walkable. We walk to the Mashpee Commons. The lights there are user-friendly. Traffic stops. We're able to cross with our little four-year-old granddaughter. I always feel safe. I never find it a problem. I see all the residents of Life who walk, have jobs, and it's not been a problem. I don't see how this is going to be a problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. [applause] So, it's not like town meeting. However loud you are, doesn't going to influence our vote. Go ahead, the gentleman in the plaid, and then Dennis identified. Who else?
That was the
Okay. Hi.
I'm Ted Hill, 14 Pemb Lane here in Mashpee. First, thank you. I wouldn't want to do your job. It's a tough thing to try and make everybody happy, and I'm very much in favor of this proposal. You know, you represent the people of Mashpee. I think it's fair to say that overwhelmingly, most people in Mashpee support this, but you have to balance, of course, is this the right thing? Is it too much, you know, for everything, from our wastewater and our traffic and so on? I'm very impressed with the presentation. I think they've taken a lot into consideration. I would say, I get the impression that you haven't read extensively the traffic report that they've submitted, but you've discounted it heavily because they paid for it. Of course, they paid for it. Nobody else is going to pay for it. We're in the building our proposal. If you find fault in it, then by all means, do another one, but somebody said essentially, you know, we're definitely going to do another study. Well, why don't we first read this one, question them extensively before we add costs? We all say that we're concerned about those less fortunate. This is a great option for those less fortunate. I see why it's taken five years to get to this point. Every other delay, every other study adds more costs and consideration. One thing about traffic, the opposite is also true. You know, I have to drive, my phone says it's 12 miles from the rotary to the store in Hyannis, and I don't know how far it is to get out to our market basket. I drive through all those other towns and villages, just like we all do when we go down there. So, we're going to take a load off of their traffic. We're all a little bit more considerate of our neighbors, too. Yes, people will come here, but we also don't have to go nearly as far. And we're not going to put that load on Barnstable anymore. We're not going to put that load on Bourne and so on. So I hope you'll consider all that, too. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. [applause] Okay, who was next?
I agree.
Is there somebody else that would like to? Okay. So, if you have some thoughts after this meeting, I would encourage you to put them down in writing. Make sure you send them in to Brian Tobin. We are, we're not going to close the public hearing today. It will be continued to a time certain. You need to keep track of that. You won't get another notification of that, okay? So, if you have a question, if you don't write it down tonight, you have a question, please call the planning department. It's 508-539-1414. Their delightful staff will help out. But just to, yeah, they're so friendly. And thank you, Brian and Hannah, but
I was going to say Hannah's way more delightful than I am.
Well, she's the one that answers the phone first. But keep track of that on your calendar, because you won't get that notice in the mail. So, I don't know if any board members had any follow-up questions based on what they were tonight?
So, the man, we got to get a
Can you use your mic?
We got to get an engineer, though, to look at this project.
So now we're going to talk about what date we're going to pick to continue this meeting to.
Before, I'm sure, not sorry, before you do that, I just want to make sure that, you know, we checked the boxes of the things that we talked about that you're going to want to see, you know, whether that's at the next meeting, or the, you know, when we do the traffic. So, some of the things that I picked up on were, obviously, the board wants to know about hours of operation, delivery times, the number of deliveries, I'm sure is probably important. I know that the trash management, pest control, providing that information to the board, providing updated plans to reflect whatever minor changes may have been made since what you have now. Obviously, updating, you know, putting it in an easily reviewable presentation, slide about
About the pedestrian
About the pedestrian
The walkability of the project.
Exactly. I think important, and, you know, certainly talked to Mark about this, I know there was some commentary from the residents of buildings A and B, and, you know, what the screening is, what the, you know, the slope is, walls, things like that, so we can, you know, certainly address that. Again, yes, pedestrian-friendly. I know there was a question about the interior space. How much of that is going to be dedicated to food and beverage?
The demographics?
The demographics, yep, demographics. There was a question about whether or not the stormwater management complies with the most recent revisions to the bylaw, so we'll certainly address that as well. Those were the major points I had, so if there's anything else that the board wants to
I'm going to add one to this, and that is, you know, will the Hyannis store stay open?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to
And an additional comment from the public is perhaps a summation of the nitrogen input and the impact on
Oh, so say that again, Brian.
A summation of nitrogen input, you know, maybe we can break down the IA system into lay terms and
That's a nitrogen cycle of the site.
BPM.
Yeah, that was a good one, and, right, so we're a nitrogen-sensitive area, and we are, our watersheds are impacted, nitrogen impacted.
We'll also include a slide that shows what type of mitigation that we're putting forward.
Oh, the two, the mitigation
So, both off-site mitigation from traffic perspectives, but also fees, and then I believe you guys, there was a question on where those fees, how they get allocated, so
Right, but we'll handle that one internally, the mitigation funding.
But if you could add that to your mitigation slide, those, the fees, Brian's going to figure out internally what our policy is and how the town uses those.
Right, we're just going to put how much we're giving to the
Yep.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I didn't, I did not catch that there might be some off-site mitigation in addition to the fees. John, I will get to you in a moment, yeah.
Along with, since traffic was being mentioned, a point was made about a tentative bus stop, and if it is put in there, the potential impact on traffic, so that's something that hopefully we can flesh out in future hearings.
That is on the plan, the bus stop there. We can talk about that. One thing we wanted to also include was the 40-foot trucks in the turning radiuses.
The turning radius, yeah.
Yep. So let's add that.
And then, of course, the review from the fire chief.
I think indirectly, too, yeah, we'll definitely have, yeah. I think indirectly, too, though they didn't specifically ask for it, there was a comment about the potential view from the neighboring buildings. Is there a way to do a simulated view analysis so we could get us into that?
What I think would be most applicable especially is that neighboring, a better understanding of what's on that slope and for plantings, you know, walls or whatnot, to make sure that's there, and then it can put a perspective from there as far as
Site visit.
Site view.
Well, definitely a site visit, but that's, yeah. We may do that in lieu of a
It would be nice to do a site visit with the project proponent, and, you know, possibly reach out to the owners of building A and B so that we're allowed to come on your property to look down.
And then, just two minor comments. One is, obviously, we're very sensitive to the fact that we're in the, you know, Pompanas it overlay, Pompanas it watershed. We're not in a groundwater protection overlay district. This lot is not in that overlay district. That's one thing to note. And then the other thing, I know there was a comment of why can't we put the store in the industrial district? Well, the industrial district doesn't allow this type of retail, so you can't do it.
Okay, all right. Let's just go, can I just
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that our list is... Did you have anything else?
Well, the other comments I had are more detailed that'll come out in peer review anyway, so in the interest of time, it's probably not worth delving into them.
Somebody brought up jobs. I don't know if that's in our application about the job.
Yeah, we could do a slide that talks about the jobs employment, one of the, you know, benefits and whatnot.
I think the private road issue was brought up, so it sounds as though, if you could confirm the owners of the road and what's their maintenance agreement, like if the road gets damaged, who's responsible? I'm sure it's a legal issue.
Well, yeah, and along those lines, too, I think there were, there were comments about potentially not, this is something that we could potentially vet out in a peer review of the traffic report, but just the comments on what happens if folks don't adhere to the traffic regulations and are cutting through the neighboring parking lot, like what's a realistic assessment of what that might look like?
So that is
Okay, so
I guess that was, I think that would be handled in the traffic consultant as they talk through why things were designed the way they were, meaning the curve to come on to 28 was designed such, and if you look at that drawing, you can see the angle, so ultimately, if somebody went around the curve and then did a huge U.
And then not to also just like pick apart all the logistics, additional discussion on the benefits of, like what distinguishes, now that we have confirmation as Trader Joe's, what distinguishes Trader Joe's from other grocery stores in general? Obviously, you don't have to name names, but just, you know, versus average prices and variety and that kind of thing.
Yeah, we can do a slide on what the benefits of that, this specialty grocery is.
Okay. I know that John Miller had his hand up. Why don't you come up real quick, and you'll have to share, you just have to put one of the mics on the podium, please?
It's real quick, and you just touched on it, though, but I would be happy to see the maintenance issue of that lower part of Shellback on Mr. Corrine's list.
Okay.
Presumably, the developer has at least a 25% interest in any problem-solving that's existing there. Thank you.
Okay. Brian, did you have anything else? Okay, Dennis?
On this mitigation money, it goes to the Cape Cod Commission first, and then they're the ones that say to Mashpee, here's how much you get in here.
They hold it for us.
So, we don't get the money, mitigation money. Cape Cod Commission gets it.
The mitig
Another thing
On Evergreen Circle, every time they sold a lot, they had to pay the commission, where that money goes from there.
Yeah. Another thing, for the site visit, at one time, we had to go see where people could see it, and we had them put up balloons, like 35 feet, so maybe some big balloons, and we go up on A and B's property, and you can see, if you can see the top of the roof or whatever, but that's a good idea if you put some helium balloons up, so we can see, you know, if
And they're not regular helium balloons, they're like those weather balloons?
Well, they
They're heavy.
They have Verizon to do it for us.
Oh, let's have Verizon.
They put helium gas in them.
They put helium gas in it, but
Preferably on a sunny day.
Those are only, I actually had to do one of those in New Seaberry on a project. As long as it's not a windy day, they work well.
Right, right, right. Okay. Anything else from board members? Brian?
No, I'm just trying to think in my head what is a good date to continue to, because we want significant, or sufficient time for the applicant to gather these materials for us to do our peer review and to actually engage a consulting engineer, and I certainly don't want to do it eight days before the holidays.
So, have you provided us a waiver for the timeline for this?
Not, I've not been asked to do one yet, so
Would you consider that?
Yeah.
It's kind of an extraordinary case.
Yes.
All right, so
We'll be able to prepare our information fairly fast. Everything's available to us, it's just going to be putting it in the presentation form.
Right.
Yeah, I think
And it's a thick package for a new engineer.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Who hasn't done a lot of work in Mashpee, so they have to read all our regs and all that stuff and then review it. Typically, what they do is, well, anyways. All right, so what date do you think, Brian?
Whoa. Put me on the hot seat. I mean, I think the fourth is too soon. I think the fourth of December is too soon. I think the 17th is just challenging for folks who want to participate.
It's the third, isn't, wait.
Excuse me, the third, yeah, excuse me. The third of December, I think, is too soon. I think the 17th is too challenging because a lot of folks who may want to be paying attention and actually at the public hearing, maybe traveling for the holidays then.
Then you're talking January
I hate to put us in January, but
I really, respectfully, we're really under some time constraints as far as moving this along, so I have a feeling the next hearing is not the final hearing, meaning if we have
It might not be, because typically, the engineer, it really depends on what we've done with the past two board engineers that Dennis and I have worked with, and I think some other people worked with Charlie. He would review them and go back and forth
With our engineers.
With your engineer.
Correct.
And then the things that weren't resolved would come to us.
So they're going to review, but does that mean that if, is that, so the consulting engineer will be reviewing the traffic, those turning radiuses, all those items with our engineer?
Well, yeah, there would be a complete peer review.
We're probably going to have more than one staff person from this engineering group looking at this, right? One's going to be a professional engineer, and one's going to have a specialty in traffic.
We'll have P/Civil, and then we will have a traffic specialist look at this.
So I guess what I would say is if the board was inclined to, if, if, if our consultants are working alongside of their consultants and then we're coming in, I'm trying to set my expectations so I can also make some phone calls.
Oh, yeah.
Meaning if, if we, if ever, if they come in and it's January, the first meeting in January, and we're all like, yes, they've come to a resolution, then it feels like maybe that is the, that, that only hearing that we would need. We answer a lot of questions. If it's something that you'd want.
No, so we should probably make it December seventeenth and we'll do the best we can.
That'd be great.
I mean, we'll at least have your presentation.
That's right. And our presentation is to go through everything and then that can address things that need to be tabled if it's not finalized with the consultants.
Okay. And so should we make that at December seventeenth?
Yeah, we don't have anything scheduled for then, so anytime is good. Six forty.
Yes. Is everybody here?
I'm around.
I, I'm, I'm asking the board members, sorry. Um, I'm here. I'm here. Okay, good.
Santa Claus needs me to help him up in the North Pole.
I don't think December seventeenth is going to be the last meeting. It is recorded and, and broadcast, so, um. And then, and I'll, I recognize you in just one second. And then, um, you know, we can spend time on this in January, but I would like to know is basically, um, when it feels like the board, and Chris knows this, when it feels like the board is ready to, to make a decision, we actually have staff draft a decision, and that goes out, um, to everybody to review. It just, it just, so there's almost like an extra meeting that's needed at the end. So.
Yeah, and I mean, this is just timing on our end to try to, we've done everything we can to keep our specialty grocer throughout the five and a half years engaged. And, uh, we are, if we can just keep, if that's the plan, December seventeenth is great. And then we'll try to get everything handled ahead of time, submit our slideshow to the board beforehand, so everyone has time to review it.
Yeah, so they give us our packet the Friday before that Wednesday. Do you know what I mean?
Okay, so Friday before.
So it's like, no, you have to have it into staff by.
The Wednesday before.
The Wednesday before.
A week, a week before the hearing.
Right. I mean, we do the best we can to be accommodating, um, but that's so that staff.
We can make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
The supplemental traffic, um, imagery and renderings, uh, try to get us as well in advance as possible because we'll send those over for.
Right, so anything that has to go to our, an engine, it has to be reviewed by a, a peer consultant or an engineer.
I believe our, the engineering package is very complete and ready to be reviewed by the consultants that are specialists in that.
Okay.
The graphics that we're creating are to take them and make them easier to read.
Well, we, we're saying we want to have one meeting where we go through their traffic engineer. Okay, so we would want our traffic engineer there as well. So that's one meeting. But what's the order to get to special, you know, whatever we get to in January? If we start at December seventeenth, when, what about our consulting engineer? That will all be done by December seventeen?
Well, the hope is yes, that peer review's locked up and, and complete.
Okay, and then the.
At least one week in advance before our next public hearing.
Yep, we'll have that as well. So we have plenty of time for that. I think that gives us, December seventeen gives us what's almost six.
I think what we're looking at, you know, from probably what's realistic is on December seventeenth, we'll be able from our seats, provide you a slideshow, the answers of the questions that we can do, you know, that we can provide. It's really out of our control whether or not your, um, consultant is gonna be prepared for that meeting, but at least we're not delaying it till January, then giving you that, then having another meeting that's solely dedicated.
We can, we can respect that, yeah.
After consultant.
And I also think that the project has been so vetted by so many different engineering firms as well as different subcommittees, that I think the back and forth from the new consulting engineer for the town, us getting all the details and showing, hey, this was, this was thought out. Here's the entry there. We have seven renditions, and this is why we got to this one, or this is that. We'll hopefully make that process easier.
Okay. Um, did somebody have a comment? Okay, all right. Do, do you guys want to put out a Zoom link for the next meeting?
Can I just add one thing to your question?
Why don't you come right up? Do you have to use, you have to use the microphone?
Oh, I can talk pretty loud.
But they can't hear you at home. I'm sorry.
All I wanted to do was add to your drawings. I haven't heard anything about signage. What kind of signage is going to show up either on Shellback Way or on twenty-eight? So maybe I missed that in the discussion, but I'd like to see it on.
I think we need some slides.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's get some slides on that. All right, put that to the list.
Everything, all the signaled areas, the unsignaled areas, all signage, everything that's written on the roads.
So what we'll do is we'll provide what we know is a absolute signage, but we do not have, the way our specialty grocer operates, they would be applying for the signage on a sep, we would be applying on a separate meeting. So we can get whatever.
To the planning board?
No.
Maybe you're talking about design review.
Design review. I think what's being asked is like street signage, as far as like right turn only signage, what's painted.
No, I'm talking about Trader Joe's.
Building signage?
Yeah.
I'm talking about store signage.
Store signage.
Yeah, so we don't.
We know that already.
I can provide what we.
Provide it to design review.
Well, right, well, right now all it says is grocery. So, yeah, you know what, yeah.
What we, what.
Are you talking about street signage?
I'm talking about all signage.
Okay.
So we're at.
All signage.
The tenant will be providing signage plans at this stage. Their process, we'll provide what we can for signage locations and size, and then we can kind of piece it together from there.
You show a monument sign on your plan now.
Yeah, so what we can do is show size, style, and we can use our, uh, we, we can do our best to represent what those signs will look like.
That would be very helpful to me. So that, so, um, whoever that person was might want to come up. So what I'm, what I'm floating out there for our, because somebody said they can't, somebody from the public said, oh, I can't attend the December seventeenth meeting. Would it be helpful if we added a Zoom link to our agenda? Um, there's at least one person. So let's, the next meeting, uh, for this, the, the public hearing, we will have a Zoom link. Um, Mashpee TV runs our Zoom for us. Um, the only thing is, we're not, I'm not so used to it, um, as chair. So, you know, you, you really, if you feel you're not being seen on Zoom, make sure you know how to raise your hand with that little yellow sign, that kind of stuff. Um, just make sure that, um, we see you. That's my big fear with Zoom is that we don't see somebody's hand up. Okay. Okay, so I would accept a motion that we, uh, continue, oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
We, we talked about November, uh, seventeenth.
December.
December seventeenth. We haven't set a, a date for the traffic only review.
We'll, we'll do that at the next hearing, Rob.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that.
End of the year.
Right, I'm hoping that the presentation on the traffic happens on December seventeenth. And so we're gonna.
No.
No.
Nope.
You, you said a separate meeting other than this time.
Okay.
I think the general civil peer review will happen then. Uh, our hope, I think our real hope is the general civil peer review will happen then. Perhaps some comment on traffic, but I think we should have an additional hearing that focuses specifically on traffic in separate, apart from that. So.
Okay.
I mean, does, I, I don't know how much presentation you're gonna have with answer those questions and how quickly you can accommodate. The, the publics need to know the answers to them, and whether we could do that in twenty minutes or half an hour and then proceed to the parking area. I mean, he's, he's got some limits. You've got some people to hire.
I think there's a big unknown, which is what the feedback is gonna be from our engineers. So that's what we have to find out, how voluminous it is.
I think the engineer, our traffic engineer?
Yeah, well, both.
If we were to shoot for that date, and, meaning we all are doing our best to get there, even if they're fifty percent through the traffic, we get through what we've got accomplished. That if we come prepared with, it won't take very long to get through things outside of that traffic. And if, at that point, our slides are gonna represent graphics that display a lot of the traffic, and then at that point, hopefully the consulting engineer and our engineers have had at least some back and forth to get a perspective of where things stand, even if it's not a hundred percent complete.
Okay. And, and remember the public, if you have any questions after tonight, get them to Brian as soon as possible, so we can look at those ahead of time.
I make a motion, we continue this public hearing to December seventeenth at six forty.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
What are you abstaining or not voting? Okay.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, have a great night.
It's not clear at all. December seventeenth, they do their PowerPoint presentation. Once another meeting to do the traffic study. Another meeting for the. Bring us through that.
I have to end the question, you know, they, you don't agree. So I went up to him after the meeting, I said, I wasn't right.
Phew.
What? I'm on the same wavelength.
Phew.
You can have it, yeah.
All right.
We have still more stuff to do.
Well, what's left, Mary?
So we have no board engineer report, right?
We don't have a boarder.
Okay. Not planner.
See what's left on this.
No, maybe he wouldn't let me speak.
Wait, we're still on here.
I forgot. Tom, Lynn, how you doing?
Hi, Tom, how are you?
I'll, I'll try to keep an open mind, though.
Yeah.
I'll try to keep.
I will.
You wish you were sitting here now, huh?
I know, all those years ago, my goodness, that's how I met Tom, was on the.
Hi, Lynn.
Hey, Tom.
See you, Tom. Okay.
He, he used to be on the planning board.
He was on the planning board when I joined it.
Rob, don't sit on it, right?
No, I didn't seat him.
All right.
Should I do the, uh, engineer report, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Oh, good.
We did the ANR. We're now on board and due report, project reviews and inspection.
Uh, so, um, this is an email submitted by Ed Pesci.
Yeah, you gotta get right up to it, Brian. Pretend you're on NBC.
I mean, the funny thing is when you watch on YouTube, you can hear me just fine. I wanna, I wanna adjust the mic so that I don't have to put it right in my face.
I want you to get a headset. Can you use one of those?
Just pull it.
I would get a headset, actually. I would love to get a headset. Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Use it from, yeah, coordinate it with Mashpee TV, so it will work. But get a headset, you'd look great.
I think I said this at another meeting. I could get like Andrea Bocelli's thing where it's just like here, you know, I wish I had his voice.
I got a megaphone at home, I can bring it.
There we go, yeah. Please disperse. Um, so this is a, uh, oh wow, that's much louder, huh?
Yes.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 he turned it up, right? You can hear me.
I don't know, or you get a little closer.
Can you hear me from here?
Just move it a little closer to yourself, Brian. You know, the whole thing, from the bottom, like there.
All right. Um, hello, this is an email from Ed Pesci, our engineer, who is unable to be here this evening. Hello, Mary and Brian. Thank you, Chris. You've gotta love that personal attention. Brian, I got your voicemail, uh, that there is no Zoom link for tonight, and that the, uh, other major projects, uh, on the agenda will be transferred effectively to the new engineer. So there, uh, here is my inspections update. One, Osprey Court, uh, the contractor, Pastore Construction, who's the sub that's doing the paving, uh, recently cut the binder pavement to set the frames and inlet grates for all the catch basins to grade. However, he needs to set silt sacks in all the catch basins since the roadway side slopes have not been loaned and ceded yet. Sand is eroding into the CBs. They were also still needing to place final pavement on the sewer trench along Great Oak Road. I emailed the contractor last Friday about all this last Friday, thirty-one October, and he acknowledged the work is scheduled to be done ASAP. Two, Country Club Estates, the contractor has only done limited work in the new phase, uh, number section of the project, installing only three catch basins while he was waiting for the other structures and piping to arrive that is on order. I expect they will start this work back up in the next week or two, and they will call me when they start up again. Um, I did happen to bump into Ken, uh, in the marketplace, and he told me that the stripings arrived and that they're just waiting for the next sunny day to put that in at the intersection that Dennis is concerned about.
I'd like to stop by there. They didn't do all sides yet, that stuff, the strike and all.
For sure. Three, Willow Circle, the developer, Scott Miller, and I made a joint site visit last Wednesday, twenty-nine October, to examine the remaining work, which includes constructing an entrance island and gates to close this project out and to prepare for final paving of the road. I developed a punch list and emailed that last Friday to the contractor to get construction. I plan to re-inspect the site next week and, and when they perform the final paving. Four, Island Pickle. Good site work progress there, as the entire drainage infrastructure is installed, and the front section of parking and driveway for the building has binder paving now. The septic system in the rear of the building was about two-thirds completed as of last week. Interior work is prog, uh, progressing well, but the planned opening of three November has slipped a couple of weeks. Um, I also went out to Island Pickle, and I know, I know Dennis did too. I didn't do the interior tour though. Don't worry, I wouldn't do that without you, Dennis. But, uh.
Today, I went to look around it.
Yeah, uh, but the, the great thing is I caught it right when they were laying that emergency entrance, which I know we had a ton of back and forth about on the plans, and it was kind of cool to see that, uh, in progress, and I, and I snapped some photos there. Uh, five, Mashpee Commons, uh, witnessed sewer line pressure testing, third-party testing company, last Wednesday, and the site crew was also working to solve some water main leaks, which they located while I was there. An inspector from the Mashpee Water District was on-site to observe this work. Next up for them is installation of ever-source duct banks and conduit, followed by placement of gravel base for the drives and parking in order to get binder paving placed in the next couple of weeks. Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Next couple of weeks have to be tough.
Okay.
They shut down the plant like the, end of November, you know, the, the payment thing.
Okay, we have, um, next, thank you very much. Thank you, Ed. Um, eighteen, Pheasant Park Drive, release for, request for release of covenants.
The applicant is not here this evening, so I would recommend we table it until they are.
Ooh.
Continue it.
Do we have all these documents? I'm writing to certify that the restrictions referred to in the deed for the above property dated October sixth, twenty-twenty-five does not implicate or conflict with the Mashpee Planning Board covenant dated from nineteen eighty-four. Have you looked at those two documents?
Yes, I, I, I have copies of them, and they are on file with, uh, the department. I believe Hannah neglected to put them in the packet, but I reviewed both and I cross-referenced it. I mean, it's an old plan and an old covenant. Um, we did one like this similarly, uh, a few months ago, uh, on, uh, Noisy Hole Road, and what we did is we just released this, the single lot that was requesting it. I mean, this was like the last unbuilt lot in that subdivision.
Yeah.
And, uh, all the other homes, they, they cleared their title search and their closings without an issue, I guess. Um, the counsel for the applicant assured me that he did a thorough title search and did not find a release on it. Again, this dates back, I believe, to like eighty-two. Um, so.
Can you just email us out? We'll table it and.
Yeah.
And can you email us out those two documents that were recorded?
Yeah, that's fine. I also do think that the applicant should be here to present it, though.
Yeah.
Um, but, or at least a representative. Or at least a representative of the applicant, but yeah, we will table it. It's not something that needs to be continued, it's not a public hearing, so.
Okay. Okay, local comprehensive plan, okay. Here it is. You guys have copies of it?
I probably just don't.
This is new.
Oh, no, then I don't have one.
Does anybody need a copy of it?
Maggie, we got one.
What is it?
So, it's the local comprehensive plan.
No, I don't have a copy of that either.
Okay.
No, I do not.
Okay.
So in your packets, it indicates that they're online, there was a separate link to them. If you do, would like a hard copy, please come into the department, we'll give you one. It's just, it is a 200-plus page document, so if folks prefer to access it electronically, we prefer to save some trees and some ink.
What's the title of it again, Mary?
Local comprehensive. It's the local comprehensive plan. If you look at the email that you received about this meeting with the link to this meeting packet, there's a second link in that email to this document. Okay.
That plan in that condition is going to the Cape Cod Commission?
After we review it, it already went to the Cape Cod Commission.
And they made us do some correcting.
Oh, okay, so it's on.
There was a plan from like Ipswich or something in there?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'll pick one up.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I like a hard copy.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so, I'm sorry I gave it to him.
It's all right, I can get it, I don't need it tonight.
I'm gonna have to pet, I must teach.
Just email Hannah and she'll print it out.
You have one?
Email Hannah, she'll print one out for you, let her know when you're coming in.
All right.
She'll see me in case she doesn't, and I'll do it for you.
Our goal, our goal is to get this, we think it has to go to town meeting.
Yeah, definitely.
We'd like it to, we'd like to bring it to town meeting in May. And so we need to let the select board know that in February. So we have some work to do to make sure it's right. I am hoping that, that the plan could be shopped around over at the tribal building, because there's whole sections about economic development, housing, you know what I mean? It really would be nice to kind of, remember the $9 million for broadband?
Yep.
We have that grant, it's out for bid right now. That kind of stuff should be throughout this plan, your plans should be kind of at least mentioned someday integrated. Right, we'll see.
Brian, could you tell me or tell us, you know, the timeline exactly? I mean, what's the order? I know this has to go to the town manager, does it have to go to the Cape Cod Commission for review first, then the, then the town manager, then put on, you know, February schedule for May? I mean, it seems like it's awfully crushed together.
Sure, but before I did that, I did want, it did seem like earlier, Dennis, you wanted to make a comment.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to know how much percentage the Cape Cod Commission said was good, and how much that we have to go over.
The comment that I got was about the growth policy.
All right, but I, I'd like to get it done in May, but I wanted to go to the fall
Yep.
town meeting, so we have more time.
Yes.
To really do this, because I don't want to rush this. We send it back to the Cape Cod Commission, and they say, oh, you got to do it again.
Well, let's see how we do.
All right.
Let's see how we do.
Let's keep in that, that in mind, though.
Yeah. I would say I'm on board with. Yeah, I would say I'm on board with shooting for May. I haven't finished my review of this most recent compiled draft, because I just got it in. I can tell it does need some updating in terms of data, and also just some updating in terms of.
Some things have been accomplished that were in there.
Um.
To do.
So it's a little challenging for me to grasp how, like, the extent of that work. I, but I think it's, like, I'm definitely on board for a shooting for May, but if that doesn't happen, I definitely don't want it to let it go past October, you know?
We, we put in a lot of comments, Karen, you remember? If those comments made it in, they were in pretty good shape. If those comments didn't make it in, then yes, I'm very concerned, but I have faith that they put them in.
But is, what's the place where they're not liking? Is it one particular area?
The growth.
Economic growth, yeah.
The regional policy, and I'll send this out to everybody, the regional policy plan has a growth policy. Their comment was that our plan did not match the growth policy of the regional policy plan. Now, it could be that we put our vision statement where our growth policy statement should be. So that's, that was the one comment that they said, that it, they would not support it because it didn't match it, but it could be an omission of literally one sentence from the document.
Why don't you call them and talk to them? You can't do that?
I'm jump-starting this project, Karen. So the first thing is, everybody has a copy of it, right? That we're going to all start to read it. No, I don't, I don't want to call them without hearing from you guys about the plan.
I'd like to know what is it that is wrong with.
Okay.
From them.
I, I will, I will.
In detail?
I will get that.
Can they give you page and cite the areas where?
Yes, I will get that too.
When you're saying them, are you saying Western Sampson, or are you saying the Cape Cod Commission?
Cape Cod Commission.
Yes, I have to give you the one sentence or two-sentence growth policy.
Okay.
Right? Statement that's part of the regional policy plan. They want a section, and I think it's like a simple paragraph about it. I think that was simply omitted.
Couldn't you just ask them, what is, what is, give us the parameters of what you need?
Yes, I will ask them.
What if, what if we tell the Cape Cod Commission, we like what we gave you, and that's what we're keeping? They're advisory committee, they can't tell the town what to put in their local plan, that they just give, here's what we like to see, but it's our town, that's what I don't understand about the Cape Cod Commission. I mean, they give recommendations, and we have to bow down to their recommendation.
What's the detriment if we, if they don't approve what we're sending them?
You cannot be part of a three-party development agreement.
Okay, try.
Okay, and that has been very important to this town.
Okay.
That brings us to the negotiating table for a large-scale development, and we want to be at that negotiating table.
Last time I read, they said the planning board wasn't going to be in a development agreement, it was going to be.
So.
The developer, the Cape Cod Commission and the select.
I forgot if it was the, it was Chapter D, got modified just within the last three months, maybe four months. We, we, the town of Mashpee has a certified local comprehensive plan. Okay. Once it's certified, it's certified forever. They changed their regulations under Chapter D such that a certified plan that's older than 2018 does not comply with the 2018 regional policy plan, that host community cannot enter into a three-party development agreement.
Got it.
With a private entity, the Cape Cod Commission and the town. The town would be off the table, not allowed to negotiate. We would have no, no power. It would just.
Well, it's not that we would have no power with a development agreement.
We would have no, we would have no say in that development agreement unless they wanted us to, because we wouldn't be a part.
But there would still need to go through the local approval process, though.
I'm talking about the development agreement.
Yep.
Right? Fine, they can't overstep our zoning, not at this point, right? But we would not have a seat at the negotiating table on that development agreement. They could allow us, but we would lose our right, our legal standing to be there, and that's important.
Yeah, it is.
That's important. So that's why I want to get this done, and I want to get it on the warrant for May. So.
Read.
Read.
Good thing, right?
I know, it's, I know it's 9:30, I, you know, at night, but I think we can do it. We spent a lot of time preparing this document, doing the background, and I think we can do it.
Like Karen says.
Will you give us a clue then, so we know what to look at?
Yeah.
Give us a clue for the Cape Cod Commission.
I shall do that. I apologize that I wasn't prepared for that tonight.
Well, that's okay.
Okay. I, I think I did a good job getting it on the agenda and getting at least one copy here to distribute. So I apologize for that.
It's okay.
But there was something else I was preparing for.
Yeah. No, it's too much.
All right, let's move on.
Who wants to close this meeting out? Okay.
I think the Celtics are winning.
Um, is there, is there anything pressing?
Nothing.
Town Planner Report, anything pressing on there?
No, I think I pretty much alluded to most of the things on there, and anything else that I did not allude to, I can pick up at the next meeting.
All right, Cape Cod Commission, thank you.
Yeah, I, some time ago, I talked, we talked about having Ernie Frigilio in, and he's agreed to do that, and given Dennis, your comments frequently about Cape Cod Commission and its role, and it might not be a bad idea, I mean, no urgency, but I'd like to put it out there for whenever you think it's appropriate, Mary.
I think, I think let's, let's do a little bit of work on the LCP.
Yep.
And then have them come in.
And then have them come in.
Fair enough.
I think that was an excellent idea. That's it, because then we'll have something to talk about. Charter Review Committee, December 2nd, maybe one of our last meetings. There was some concern that our submission to town meeting of warrant articles actually was the committee's final report.
Oh, yeah, that, people were confused with that.
Right? So there was one question that if town council is fine with us letting it stand in the charter, we will probably draft a final, a formal final report, listing the things that kind of didn't get resolved and be done, that, the changes that the review committee suggested got approved, town meeting accepted them, they'll be on the annual town election ballot